Recording in progress.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the November 22 special and regular meeting of the Pacifica City Council. We have a closed session and City Clerk, could you please read the description for us of the closed session meeting?
Yes, so for the closed session meeting, item agenda is for conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, as detailed in the city council agenda. And I am not seeing any hands raised at this time for public comment, Mayor Beckmeyer.
Okay, then we'll retire our closed session and return. Thank you.
Is someone going to just be there to tell Tiger to leave?
He's there.
Oh, okay.
The Pacifica City Council on November 22, 2021. City Clerk Coffee, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yeah.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Here.
And Mayor Beckmeyer, I can make a few statements about tonight's meeting format, if you please.
Please go right ahead.
This meeting is a joint meeting of the Pacifica City Council and Pacifica Financing Authority, is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code, Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26, or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button, or star nine if you're participating by dial-in phone, to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. The City Clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number of dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. Those email comments received by 12:00 PM today were provided to council members and posted on the city's website prior to. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you, City Clerk Coffee. I will now read our land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatush Aloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatush Aloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as a wealth as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni people. And we will have a salute to the flag led by Councilmember Vaterlos.
Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no reportable action this evening.
Thank you. All right, council, before we proceed, I do want to let you know that staff have informed me that we may wish to amend the order of the agenda. And this is in regard to items six and seven. So the idea would be to reorder the agenda to move item seven prior to the public hearing, Agenda Item Six. This would be item seven, which has to do with the edible food recovery ordinance having to do with mandatory organic waste disposal, putting that first, and then having item six, which is the adopting a resolution confirming the rate adjustment of recology.
So moved. Second.
And with the adjustment to the order of the agenda moved by Councilmember Vaterlos, and seconded by Councilmember Big Stick, I'll call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the adjustment to the order of the agenda to move item number seven prior to item number six passes unanimously.
Okay, then we will, thank you. We'll turn our attention to the consent calendar. I will be asking council members if they wish to pull any consent items for deliberation or discussion as a whole. Items polled will be placed as discussion items after the consent calendar, and any public comments will wait until that discussion item. For the remaining consent calendar, I will ask if there is any public, anyone, member of the public that wishes to discuss items on the consent calendar, with the exception of any item that has been polled. In which case, I will ask people to raise their hands now. The City Clerk will call on raised hands, or Mr. Montemayor, the assistant, will call on raised hands for the consent calendar. We will then close public comment. I will make a statement or ask any questions on the consent calendar, and then we will have a motion and a second and a vote. I will then open any of the polled consent items and ask for public comment on those items. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so. At this time, each speaker would be allotted, I think, two minutes tonight. We have a pretty full agenda. If there's objection to that, council members, would you please indicate? Seeing none, then I will assume two minutes. And as a reminder, items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless something is polled to have an item discussed. Council members. Oh, Mr. Montemayor, do we have a public comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one hand raised by Jim Kramer, followed by Christine Bowles. I'll give Clerk Coffee a couple of seconds to pull up the timer.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Yes, City Manager.
City Manager, and Assistant City Attorney Pizano can chime in, but I believe the call is to ask council members first if any council members would like to pull items from consent.
Are there any, yeah, thank you for that. I didn't see any hands raised, so I'm sorry I raised ahead. Are there any council members that wish to pull items from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing no hands raised and no indication that any council members wish to pull any items, I will now turn to Mr. Montemayor to ask for any public comment. And any, any commenters, please let us know which item on the consent agenda, by number, which item you are commenting on. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first speaker is Jim Kramer. Jim, you may now unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sorry about that, Jim.
No worries, I'm good. This is Jim Kramer. I've been a resident of Sharp Park since 2008. I have a comment on item five. I was among those who wrote to Police Captain Clements and his team for the County Hazard Mitigation Plan draft, with comments about the Pacifica section especially. I waded into the new draft in the agenda packet, but it's pretty daunting, as I'm sure you all know. I would encourage you to pull item five for discussion tonight. This item is complicated, and Pacifica section has some really confusing parts. Number one for me was the question of the map of wildfire hazard severity zones, which showed, which showed that the wildfire hazard politely stopped outside our city limits. This can't be right. After review, I would think we'd want to discuss which map do we use? Is it the one that we should use? Because there are a couple of options. Has that map been updated to show the real hazard for fire within our city limits? And if not, why not? And why would we use such a map? There must be many items that other Pacificans found important in their comments that would benefit from some discussion. I want to, and I want to add two new items that I found today from Table 14-4. I learned in Table 14-4 that Pacifica does not have the ability to track development permits by hazard area, nor does it, does the city have an inventory of billable lands. At least, that was answered no on the questionnaire in our position. I know the city's team submitted responses that are factual, but I wonder if we can feel the status quo is acceptable, or if we're learning things that should be changed in the process. I assume that Pacifica will use the preparation of the county plan as an opportunity to make changes from what we learn in the process. It would be great to hear some of your thoughts on this potentially important process, such as those items that I mentioned, but maybe many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker is Christine Bowles, followed by Suzanne Moore. Christine, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. This is Christine Bowles. Good evening, council and staff. It was exactly one year ago today, the Monday before Thanksgiving, that I and my neighbors in the Manor area came before you to appeal the Planning Commission's approval of the Vista Mar project. You might remember the videos of the flooding in our neighborhood that I showed you, or perhaps you remember all the images of the mini landslides we documented that our area has experienced, including four on that very property. We fought and appealed the project primarily because we were concerned about our safety, and yet the city refused our multiple requests, even from engineering experts we hired and paid for ourselves to require a geotechnical report with proper borings. This is on a site with a 52% average slope that even my healthy and fit 25-year-old daughter Elisa cannot climb because it is too steep. Three of you on this council voted to approve the project anyway. I lost faith that our city was really looking out for our public safety that day, and yet I still keep trying to help. I've done a lot more research on Pacifica's landslides. I've spent so many hours reviewing this draft mitigation report, and I was really hoping that some of the information that we collected and researched and shared with you about Pacifica's landslide risk might be incorporated in this document. If, as you recall, I've pointed out a number of times that our safety element is deficient in regards to landslide risk because it does not consider superficial debris flow landslides. This report, again, ignores those risks. It only looks at deep-seated landslides. I would wish I sent you a long letter today. I can't even start to detail the errors and inconsistencies and missing hazards that are in the report. I'm really disappointed in the work that was done. And honestly, I don't know where we stand with this, if this is what we're communicating to the county. I encourage you to pull this item to continue to update this document properly, and we're waiting for a general plan safety element that is properly done. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I have one more hand raised by Suzanne Moore. You may now unmute yourself, Suzanne.
Thanks, Josh. Good evening, council and staff, and thank you, planning team members, for your work on City of Pacifica's local hazard mitigation. As you've heard, some community members have continued concerns, and I support their chance to revisit this report with suggested edits for your feedback. Please provide additional time for community input on safety and hazard mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Madam Mayor, I'm no longer seeing any hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I see one hand raised so far by Councilmember Big Stick. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I wanted to start by explaining why I didn't feel a need to pull the item off of consent, because we had a large handful of very good concerns that were urging us to pull the item for deeper discussion. The reason I did not, and staff, please feel free to correct any errors I make as I speak, but my understanding is this is not a planning document for the city. This is a document so that essentially, we're able to coordinate with the county to get monies, if we need them, sure, locally, but mostly regionally. And within that context, I felt like this is not the right time to discuss, not because it's not important, but because this document isn't so much about us specifically as it is about making sure that we can get those resources in a timely fashion. That being said, I do have a handful of questions I'd like to follow up on from the public because I think it is important that some of these questions get answered to the best of our ability, especially when I was hearing about the concern about the wildfire hazard severity zones. Which maps do we use, and are they up to date, if staff can answer to that? Do we track development by hazard, or excuse me, why do we not currently track development by hazard? Why do we not currently have an inventory of available parcels? And if you could speak to additional time, which my understanding is this is due by the end of December, and again, if this were more about us, I might be more inclined to seek additional time, but those are my questions.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mystic, pardon me, Madam Mayor, would you like the responses now, or would you like the council to continue its discussion?
I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem if she would like to raise questions as well, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Murdock. And then maybe you can answer everything at one time, or if there are other questions to add. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want him to go ahead and answer now, or did you want to add to that?
I just wanted to say that I too was wanting to explain myself, and I think that Tiger did that so well. And I also had the same question, so I'm just kind of like checking by your name, Tiger, that I also had those concerns and questions, and so I'm looking forward to the responses.
Okay, then, Mr. Mur, oh, the city, excuse me, Mr. Murdock, City Manager, please go ahead.
Sure. Before I turn it over to Deputy Planning Director Murdock, I just wanted to say globally, because Councilmember Big Stick asked for the affirmation that yes, what he expressed is correct about this planning document. This is, this is essentially a federal compliance document that at a very high level talks about hazards in Pacifica that allows the city to apply and make use of state and federal grant fundings, which we do regularly. We're regularly and currently in process for CalOES Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding. And the importance of this document is that if there were a lapse in it, if the city did not adopt this, then current payments would be delayed, and if there were a, some sort of disaster that struck in the time that our adoption had passed, we wouldn't be eligible to apply for that. So that, that's the setting for the background to this, you know, high-level hazard identification document. And many of the comments that I saw from the public kind of get more specific in the weeds, and as the council undertakes policy discussions, the general plan, local coastal plan, or project-specific evaluation and discussions about various infrastructure projects and studies, that's when those very specific hazard analyses are come up. So that might be a good segue for Mr. Murdock to talk about the fire.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Manager Woodhouse. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. I heard questions about the use of fire hazard maps, the ability to track permits by hazard type, and then the city's billable lands inventory or lack thereof. So I think on the first point, the question of which fire map to use, I think, in my opinion, is the wrong question. It's really a technical and legal question as to why the maps are not adopted within the City of Pacifica. Nevertheless, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan recognizes the risk of wildfire hazards and has a dozen policies to address, ways to mitigate the hazard from wildfires. And in addition, for discretionary projects that are subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, there is a process additionally to assess wildfire risk during the environmental review of a project to make sure that the city has adequately addressed those issues relative to the project design and potential for environmental impacts. So I think it's misleading to suggest that the map is or isn't the right map. We've recognized that those fire risks are present and have taken steps in this plan to identify actions to mitigate them. With respect to tracking permits by hazard type, as I read that question in this document and input the answer that, no, we do not have that ability, I interpreted it as an automated mechanism to do a query based on a hazard type and to produce a map, essentially. We don't yet have that robust capability, but I think that's not to suggest that we don't have the ability to determine whether a particular site is subject to hazards. We have hazard maps in the general plan. There are hazard maps available from various state and federal agencies that are expert in mapping those types of hazards, and we do routinely utilize those resources for specific project sites or project types or specific planning activities. And so it's not to say that we're not accounting for and identifying those hazards, but the intent of that no answer was that we don't have an automated geographic information system or other land management system that would output that type of report. And then lastly, similar response with respect to the building lands inventory. We don't have a citywide comprehensive database or map of all vacant lands that, you know, are not subject to hazards or have sufficiently low hazard risks that they're suitable for development. I think some people conflate that with our obligation to have a housing site inventory in our housing element, which we absolutely do have. But that's a subset of all properties in the city. Some of them are undeveloped, some are developed. And that's really to meet a different requirement, and it's not a billable lands inventory, as I would describe it for the city. And so I think, you know, the answers to those three are different, but I think we do adequately address all of them in our practices and procedures as a city.
And Christian, just while you're still here, so we'll have an opportunity to address some of the topics that were brought before us by our community when we're talking about the general plan, correct?
That's right, and I think it's staff's opinion that that's probably a more appropriate venue to have that discussion. As the City Manager mentioned, this is a high-level scan to make sure that communities are thinking about hazards, and they're identifying those hazards that are relevant to their community, but it's not to identify project-level activities necessarily or all of that specificity, but policies that guide the city's actions and land use development and public infrastructure investment. Those policies are in the general plan and rightfully should be discussed in that setting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vaterlos, please go ahead.
And one of the things that I read in this whole massive amount of paper is that this is a fluid document. It is not set in stone. It is changeable. And I think that's really important, too, because the document isn't set in stone. So as far as things that are smaller, not as high a level as they're intending. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just add, to be specific about Councilmember Vaterlos's comment, the plan itself is updated every five years, but annually, the city, along with all the jurisdictions in the county and the agencies participating in this plan, submit annual progress reports on progress being made on the hazard mitigation strategies. So as we move forward and we implement various plans, adopt various plans, and launch various projects, that's all progress related to, you know, protecting Pacificans from hazards in Pacifica. We would report progress on this.
I would just like to add one other comment on this issue. I don't want it to be construed by the members of the community that the council is not listening or not weighing the concerns that have been raised. I might. I myself looked very closely at them. But what I also weighed and considered is the risk to Pacifica of not having the continuity in the adoption of the plan. As much as we are in the middle of, you know, are about to be in the middle of winter, as we are in the hazards that we face in Pacifica that we all know we've seen happen time and again, we cannot risk not having access to Cal OES funds, the Office of Emergency Services funds. We can't risk not having access to FEMA funds. And so when, you know, all council deliberations, and I'm going to keep my comments to this particular issue, city attorney, but so with regard to this specific issue, that was a significant decision on my part and what I was weighing in looking at all of this. And so I just wanted to make that comment so that, you know, in addition to what City Manager and Mr. Murdock just said, you know, these things are being considered. And thank you for the input, because it helps us with the roadmap of what is most critical and top of mind for our community. So with that, councilmembers, I will entertain a motion.
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
And with the motion by Councilmember Big Stick, seconded by Councilmember O'Neill, I'll call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And consent calendar items one through five passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. That brings us to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Councilmembers should not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of-- I'm going to continue with two minutes unless council has any objection. Seeing none, a maximum for this evening, a maximum time of two minutes shall be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter One, Sections 2-1.118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may at the discretion of the presiding officer be ordered barred from the further audience before the council during that meeting. All right, oral communications, Mr. Montemayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one hand raised by Suzanne Moore. Suzanne, you may now unmute yourself.
Thanks again, Josh, and again, good evening, council and staff. The holidays are upon us, and it's been a challenging year. We do, however, have some things to be grateful for. The Coast House Forum last week was quite uplifting. In six months, Coast House has helped 14 clients find stable housing. The majority of Coast House clients are over 35, indeed, 28% of clients are aged 55 to 64, and over 50% are disabled. Coast House is the first shelter on the coast made possible by collaboration among the county and community members, said Matthew Chidstar, City Manager of Half Moon Bay. This has benefited the entire coastside community, and this shelter has changed some people's lives. I'm grateful that Pacifica is in the process of developing and implementing a safe parking permit program. Soon, we will also be doing our part to provide a pathway to stable housing for our unhoused. I do have one holiday request. I understand the city is to target release of the general plan and draft environmental impact report in December. I know this has been a huge project, a great deal of staff time has gone into it, and the city feels under timeline constraints. Would it be possible, however, to release it after the holiday season so that the public will have a greater chance to study it and respond? I wish you all a happy holiday, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker is Jim Kramer, followed by Anita Reese. Jim, you may now unmute yourself.
Okay, this is Jim Kramer again, still a resident of Sharp Park. I'm going to go ahead and read my comment, because it has more detail than what Suzanne just said, but it is on the same comment about the general plan update. I see on the planet Pacifica that the draft plans and the draft EIR for the update are expected in December 2021. My comment is a plea not to release these very important documents during the holiday season. I expect this may sound strange coming from me, because I think you know I'm watching the progress of the plan update really carefully, and as true for most of us, I expect we agree that this is of the highest priority. I know the city has been working on this hard, and that delays have been inevitable in these trying times. I know that you hoped to be at this point earlier, and then it just slid to this new timing target. I'm not suggesting that this timing is intentional. However, mid to late December is not good timing. Consider that the public and you all, all the city officials, will be distracted by holiday pressures and busy with lots of extra activities. Releasing these documents in late December would even be counterproductive, since you may well get less public engagement. Here's the critical point that Suzanne didn't mention. Even with the hearings happening later, the initial motivation that people have to go right to work on new information when it drops will be lost. It's in the past, and they got to remember it and get back to work. This is not a neutral decision. Surely, we agree, it's important to do what can be done to encourage public engagement in this process. It's possible that new delays will push this release into early January anyway. I say, great. If not, I respectfully suggest, request that the release be purposefully delayed until early January to facilitate thoughtful review and informed input by everyone concerned. Thank you for considering this surprising request.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker is Anita Reese, followed by Mark Hubbell. Anita, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. This is Anita Reese, the Director of the Pacifica Resource Center. Wanted to let you all know that we are continuing to be open during modified hours while repairs are made since the fire in September and subsequent flood in October. We are open Mondays and Tuesdays, 9:00 to 3:30, Wednesdays, 10:30 to 7:00, Thursdays, 10:30 to 5:00, and Fridays, 9:00 to 1:00. We will also-- we are closed for lunch Monday through Thursday, 12:30 to 1:30, and will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week for the Thanksgiving holiday. Whenever possible, we encourage folks to call before you come to the office, whether it's for services or to drop off a donation, and so that we can try to minimize who's in the office at any given time, just because we still are space constrained. Our office, our phone number is 650-738-7470. We are continuing to enroll families in our Thanksgiving and Holiday Joy programs, Thanksgiving for Thanksgiving. We're providing groceries, including a turkey and gift card for additional Thanksgiving items, and for Holiday Joy, we are in the process of matching our Holiday Joy families with sponsors, who we are asking to provide gift cards for their family. So to sponsor, or if you or someone you know needs help during the holidays, please call PRC. And then due to the timing of Thanksgiving, our next scheduled grocery distribution is on Wednesday, December 8th, at the American Legion Hall. If you need groceries before then, please call us to schedule a time scheduled for a pantry visit. We'll shop for you and bring out the groceries. And then just if folks are, especially during the holidays, if you come across somebody who is unhoused in an encampment on the streets or in a vehicle, please reach out to our outreach specialists at ucaoutreach@pacresourcecenter.org, or calling Daniel Gardner at 650-575-4861. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Our next speaker is Mark Hubbell, followed by Christine Bowles. Mark, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to express my opinion. I'm very, very, very concerned about the timing of the general plan work. My understanding was that that was supposed to be released to us in the public in the fall, which I guess it hasn't, and now hearing that so much of the hazard issues, which I think are substantial, are going to be rolled into that, to do that over a short period of the holidays, I find, well, not a good idea. I mean, I think we should really, as a community, have ample time for input in all these important issues, and I think the current schedule really prevents that, and I'm very disappointed if we follow the current schedule. Thank you very much for your service. Appreciated.
Thank you, Mark. Our next speaker is Christine Bowles. You may now unmute yourself.
Thank you, and good evening again, council and staff. First, I'd like to just echo the comments of several speakers requesting a delay in the release of the general plan. This is such an important document with so many parts. I mean, I've spent days reviewing just the safety element, and there are multiple sections, you know, plus the basic EIR that we need to be able to carefully review and ensure that we're working towards a plan that truly addresses our climate change risks and a vision for the city as we grow and develop, you know, for at least the next 20 years, hopefully not 40 years. And besides the public, which I'm really curious, there's been no information at all about what the public review process will be. I hope that it is not this format of a city council meeting where we only have three minutes to comment on an item. A general plan update is supposed to be a robust process of public engagement and input and back and forth, and there's been no communication at all from staff about what that process will be like. And those of us who intend to spend a lot of time reviewing these documents would really like to have a heads up and know so that we can plan for that. So I'd really appreciate that. And then I just also want to add that even state agencies, as the documents are released to them, USGS Fish and Wildlife and others, they typically have 30 days to review the document and give their comments, and if these documents are released over the holidays, then the city is basically reducing their available time to provide proper input. So really encourage you to listen to our suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And I have one more hand raised by Anita Reese, so I'll go ahead and unmute her in case there's someone on the other end, other than Anita, that wants to speak. Anita, you may now unmute yourself. Looks like Anita lowered her hand. I believe that's all for public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment and return to council. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong screen. Councilmember Big Stick, please go ahead.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and as somebody who is thoroughly looking forward to having an opportunity, hopefully to turn his brain off after the last city council meeting in December, I absolutely hear what the community is saying about their concern in terms of a real opportunity to review the EIR and comment properly that doesn't conflict with well-earned, I'm sure, scheduled downtime. So if City Manager can maybe say something about that concern and help us navigate that, it would be very helpful. Thank you. So in terms of my two weeks, which were a robust two weeks, so I'm going to probably give the Super Reader's Digest version of "I Was There" for the most part. For starters, the interesting bits, aside from looking forward to my Shampa's pumpkin pie and enjoying Kenny's for lunch this afternoon, I had the opportunity to visit the Rockaway Beach Gifts and Sweets Shop, the new candy shop in Rockaway, and I was delighted. They have a really interesting selection, going from classic candy to high-end candy. So I bought a small but very nice box of chocolates that I got to enjoy. Also this week, specifically Saturday and today, I got to enjoy the company of Planning Commissioner Nivlin's son, Peter. He was doing a school project, and essentially, he got to be my intern for 10 hours. My fellow councilmembers might be wondering what I could possibly do with an intern for 10 hours, but I found a few tasks for him to perform and was delighted to hopefully assist him in his studies. As for the rest, I was in attendance at the Economic Development Meeting and got to enjoy seeing some new committee members. I had a great time at Arbor Day with our two Sues and Mary, and Representative Ray Mueller from Menlo Park also showed up and helped with our tree planting, and so it was a beautiful and great day and being there with nature. I got to sit in on the Library San Mateo County JPA meeting, and I don't want to steal Councilmember O'Neill's thunder, but I'm looking forward to Greater Sharp Park service hours on the one hand, and on the other hand, I might show up on December 4th through the Half Moon Bay Library when our Mr. O'Neill will be Santa. I attended the One Shoreline Meeting. They passed the mitigation actions. Went to the Planning Commission Meeting on the 15th to sit in the audience about the Civic Center zoning. I attended the Heritage Tree Update Meeting on the 16th. There was a PRC, Pacifica Resource Center Board Meeting on the 17th. First of all, Myra Espinoza is the new board member. She just got elected, so congratulations, Myra. Meanwhile, I was struck by the fact that they're still recovering from fire and flood, and also we're going into their Holiday Joy Program where they're helping families to have holidays. So if you have the inkling to give them a hand right now, I'm sure they could use every bit of assistance they could get. Please call 650-738-7470 for more info, or visit pacresourcecenter.org. I wrote something down, but didn't say what it was. Okay, so I was at the Council of Cities Meeting on Friday night. Senator, State Senator Josh Becker and Assemblyman Mark Berman spoke. Mostly, there was stuff about transit environment and housing. There was discussion especially related to state and local control. That was the PCE meeting I attended on Thursday. Basically, it's past the schedule for next year, along with another issue, and the next meeting will be on the 16th. And I attended City Democrats on Saturday. Don Horstley was speaking, and it was great to see Don. And I found out that the Friends of the Library are holding their book sale at the Sharp Park Library on Friday, December 3rd, and Saturday, December 4th. So please show up at Sharp Park Library on the 3rd and 4th and buy a book and support the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm exhausted listening to all that you attended. Councilmember, right? Councilmember O'Neill, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just-- Councilmember Big Stick already talked about the Library Board of Directors, which I'm the representative for Pacifica on, is going to be adding an extra hour of service to Pacifica, and they are going to be working with staff to see how it's split between Sanchez and Sharp Park. It costs $28,000, and it's basically because of some savings from COVID. On another note, on December 5th, they're having a virtual tree lighting on Rockaway Beach, and I believe their, Mike, City Manager or Mike Perez, can confirm that Santa will be driving around town on December 5th for, you know, the holiday thing like we did with Easter Bunny and stuff. And also, I just kind of want to let everybody know in particular that we're having some challenges with PCT because of their-- somebody bought the complex, and they're needing to raise some money to either relocate or possibly buy their unit. And so PCT is having their auction, which is one of their fundraisers, and it's December 11th and 12th on Channel 26. So, and they're basically the ones that are the public broadcasting service for Pacifica and the entire coast. They go P to P. They go P to P, Pacifica to Pescadero. And it's important for, you know, because we can see the number of people. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think there's Nielsen ratings for this, but there, a lot of people do tune in. And in the age of Zoom, I think because of PCT, we've had more participation from the public and more input via Zoom. So if you need, if you would like to, and what's great about this is you can get some great deals from Pacifica merchants. The merchant tends to donate the gift certificate. And you bid on it and you buy it. And then you get to go over to the merchant and try a sample of the restaurant or see the food, the items they're selling in their shop as a gift certificate or whatever. So it's a great way for you to learn about your town also. So that's December 11th and 12th on the Red Carpet TV Auction on Channel 26. You can check their website or better yet, register as a member and you would get the emails also. Okay? And then on December 5th, the virtual tree lighting at 4:00 PM, where they're going to light the Christmas tree down at Rockaway Beach Plaza. So anyhow, that's my report.
Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Vatterlos, did I see your hand? Please go ahead.
Yes. I attended the Fairmont Homeowners Association Meeting. And that's always interesting because they get to ask questions about what's going on in their neighborhood. They were happy to hear that we presented to Caltrans the change of the right turn lane from Hickey on to Skyline, which is a problem. I went to the Veterans Day Memorial and everyone should stop by to see the memorial that's there. It was very moving. It was a great experience and everyone should see the memorial that they did put up there. The tree planting was quite fun. We did a council tree. And we had a really good time and our tree is going to be stupendous. I went to the Democrats and listened to Don Horstley and some people had specific items which he spoke about. And it's always interesting. This is, next year will be his last year. He'll be termed out. So that was interesting. And someone mentioned earlier that Councilmember Ray Mueller was at the tree planting, but he was also at the Democrats' meeting. And I also went to a fundraiser for him. So I've seen him three times this week. So that was... I went to the City and County Association of Governments regular meeting. We don't have legislative meetings when the legislator doesn't meet. We had a presentation from One Shoreline, which includes a possible partnership with the City of Pacifica in the future. 101 managed lanes, they're getting closer and closer. We do always have a presentation by 101 managed lanes. And also, the congestion management plan was presented. And that was quite interesting because it, because of Mike O'Neill, they did come and look at Highway 1 on the weekend, which they've never done. They did it on a Wednesday. They did it in April. And there was, I don't believe, school in session in April. So it was a little skewed, in my opinion, because of COVID. But they did come on the weekend and our level of service on the weekend is an E, not quite an F. They made some interesting determinations, which I'm still working on trying to see what that is. Because to me, they said that it had to do with the fact that people come here from out of town. So therefore, the problem is mitigated. And it is clearly not mitigated. One of the other items they brought up is they do a bicycle pedestrian study. And they found that the top North Coast pedestrian area was Reno Del Mar and Highway 1. So at one of the, at the Council of Cities Meeting, I did ask... Sorry, I went to too many meetings. I went to Council of Cities and Senator Becker and Assemblyman Berman were there and I asked a question in the chat about possibly working on getting pedestrian over crossings for the City of Pacifica. And the aide, Senator Becker, asked me to call her. So I will be contacting her, especially since we, I heard the day before from congestion management plan that we had the number one walking area at Reno Del Mar. And so it was an interesting few weeks and very political. And the fact that Jackie Spear has decided not to run, again, is a big issue for our San Mateo County. There's a lot happening with people who are putting their names in for that position. And then there are people who are putting their names in for Assembly. And it goes down the line to Supervisor. So it's all pretty much up in the air right now. But there are a lot, there's a lot of interest from our San Mateo County community. Thank you.
Can I just do a follow-up with Sue? Because I'm on the congestion management.
Please.
Yeah, we're, okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm glad to hear about that bicycle thing because that's something else I pushed for. But the way it was worked, they presented their report to us then we critique it. So I have to sit, so you, the representative has to sit there and beat people up and get support from the other cities to do it. And so I'm just happy to see that there was follow-through. But that did remind me that in another committee, congestion management, and I can't quite explain it because I got to talk to somebody to be sure I understand it. But on the deck, there's going to be some dedicated funding sources for some traffic mitigation and possible improvements. This is the way I'm reading it now. I have to get it clarified. Possible improvements on roadways. But the problem that I see with this is they're going to break it, set aside some for the coast and some is going to be for cities with less than 20,000. Well, we all know who that is, Half Moon Bay. And then there'll be more for cities that are more than 20,000. And the key thing there would put, that would put us in competition with Daly City. So we have to take, I might be asking my fellow council members and possibly City Manager to help me understand this, to see if this is actually going to be money dedicated to coastside transportation and road issues. So that's, I'm going to be working on that. Not this week, because this week, nobody answers the phone. But next week. All right? So I just wanted to thank you, Sue, for letting us know that that was followed up.
Thanks. Sue, go ahead.
Sorry, I had a comment for Mike, but I'll wait. One of the, sorry, I do, oh. One of the main things is the grade separations on 101, which does affect people who live here because they are going to put in grade separations so that the trains, because of the trains and the issues with, that people have had with trains. And so I just want to add that too. Thank you.
Thanks. City Attorney, do you have a comment?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mayor Pro Tem, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So yeah, on Arbor Day, as you heard, we planted a tree and we named it Lorenzo. Just want you to know that. Lorenzo's going to do great. No, it was beautiful to be there. So thank you so much for, from Tree City, Pacifica, for Arbor Day. It was beautiful and I am so appreciative of the work that you do. Okay, let's see. What did I do? On the 10th, I attended a meeting with Irving Torres, who is the Director of Community Engagement for All Home. And All Home advances regional solutions that disrupt the cycles of poverty and homelessness and create more economic mobility for, mobility opportunities for extremely low-income people. It was a really informative meeting that talked about regional strategies to address housing and homelessness. And then the same day, I went and I attended Housing Our People Effectively, the HOPE Interagency Council. And Irving Torres was there presenting. So I got a double presentation, which was probably really good because there was so much information. And just to see the work that's going to be happening regionally, I think is really important for us to become involved in that. I attended the Open Space Apartland Advisory Committee Meeting. They have a subcommittee that's going to be looking at revisiting the chapter for OSIPAC. There was a GGNRA report about Maui Point. They're going to be fixing a damaged guardrail and the fence. And there's changes to the restroom vault system, which will allow for more service from the, more service to the restroom. So that's a really good thing. I also attended the Heritage Tree Ordinance Meeting. I, and I want to thank, I'm going to thank the Age Friendly Coalition because I attended their housing panel. So we want to thank everybody who participated in the panel, Anita. And they talked about senior housing and affordable housing, just helping people understand how important it is to get on the waiting list, even if you think that it's going to be years off, how important it is to get on that list and on as many lists as you can. Because numbers come up faster than you think they're going to and you have to keep checking and making sure that you update your information once a year. That's all really important to do. And I don't think people really understand that process. So if you're looking for that help, really just try to get your name on those lists. I wasn't able to attend the Democrats' meeting because our youth civic engagement program had training. So I've been doing it for almost six months now. We've been training youth on youth civic engagement. Really exciting stuff. So I know people were interested in hearing about it. This last training was on electoral campaigns and voting. And so one of the most important things that I got to do in the past week was I got to meet with several other incoming mayors from San Mateo County, from San Carlos, San Bruno, Half Moon Bay, South City, Daly City, Belmont. And we are going to be participating in the Mayoral's Mental Health Initiative. And so collaboratively, we're going to be working on mental health strategies across the county. And so I was so happy to be included in this conversation because it's so important, all of our rebounding from COVID and how much it has affected all of us. I mean, we've all, you know, had some trauma. And so really talking about mental health and behavioral health and how we can get more funding into our communities and how we can work together to increase awareness. And so it was our very first collaborative meeting and I'm super excited about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That's super exciting. I'm looking forward to hearing more as that unfolds. So I wanted to provide a quick update to the council members and the public about what's been going on with the Beautification Advisory Committee and the Economic Development Committee. I don't feel like I, in fact, I don't think I did at all give a good report at our last council meeting about beautification. But I do want to highlight for you that a great deal of work recently has been going into addressing the bioswale areas near Cabrillo School on Crespey Drive. It's been an area where council, staff and council have received comments over time about what's going on, how come it's not planted, it doesn't look good, and this kind of response. And working very closely collaboratively with staff, with Director Peterson, with Field Services Manager Paul Laverini, there has been a contractor selected and the areas are going to be planted as a final step in that whole process of installing those bioswales, all of which was intended to achieve two objectives, one of which funded through the Safe Routes to Schools process at the county level, was to improve safety, where there's a crosswalk there where students cross back and forth. And the other of which was, the other objective was to help address stormwater runoff and drainage issues. And so, and within so doing, making a wider and planted area so that it's more noticeable and it slows people down. So the great, exciting news is that members of the BAC are volunteering their time and considerable gifts and expertise. And one particular member, Julie Gossage, in helping with a design for that area that's very focused on native plants and drought-tolerant plants. I think I did mention something about wet feet, plants that like wet, can tolerate wet feet because some of the time, there is water there, a significant amount. But in the area, times of the year where there isn't, they also have to survive and do well. So this is very exciting. Cabrillo School students are going to be involved in helping to get the plants established as they're initially planted, but also doing some water moisture testing. And it's just a really great learning opportunity. So that is a developing and unfolding project that is going to unfold pretty quickly. The work's going to be done in December, it looks like. So more on that as it unfolds. But if you drive by Crespey Drive and wonder about that, that's what's going on there. And then Economic Development Committee, we had occasion, as you know, because we did our selections recently at the council meeting for our committee and commission members, to welcome five new committee members to that body. So there were introductions around and a little getting to know you, which with five new indequities took some time, but well-spent. In addition, we heard a report from a firm that I'm going to garble the name of, so I'm not going to even try. CDI, I tried, I'm not sure of the name of it. Perhaps our Chief Fiscal Sustainability Officer or our City Manager could say the name, since I don't have it in front of me. But they've done a marketing gap analysis for the City of Pacifica, looking at our businesses and the kinds of businesses that we have, where they're located, where are our shopping areas, our concentrations, and looking at some opportunities for Pacifica. It's a very preliminary starting point. And it's very exciting to know, you know, just on the initial information that was presented to Economic Development, that it's not completely new information to us. What I think the opportunity here is, and we'll be hearing more, because I said it was very initial, is, okay, here's some ideas that maybe don't sound completely brand-new, but what are we going to do about it? How are we going to address those issues and work with the chamber and work with EDC and work with businesses in our town to take it to the next level? So more on that as it unfolds. And I believe council will be hearing about that very soon as a body. That's all I have. And I see Mayor Pro Tem has her hand up. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I forgot one thing. Pacifica Hot Rods is doing a Christmas cruise on December 18th. So anybody can light up their cars and it's going to be an evening cruise starting at 6:00 PM on the 18th. And they're going to be doing a toy drive. So it's really exciting. I want to thank Pacifica Hot Rods for doing that. As soon as we have, or as soon as they have final plans of where they're going to bring the toys, I'll definitely let you know. But keep your eyes open and anybody can just decorate their car and join in. So they've really made us have fun times like on 4th of July and all the other holidays. So thanks to Pacifica Hot Rods.
Thank you very much. Okay. Seeing no other hands from council members, I will turn it over to City Manager for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer. Mayor Pro Tem here and City Councilmember Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I wanted to start out to confirm that Councilmember O'Neill is correct. Santa Claus is coming to town on December 5th. Santa Claus is coming to town on December 5th and ending up at the virtual tree lighting that will happen. And if I didn't get any of those details correct, then Parks, Parks and Recreation Director Mike Perez can come online to add information about that. So we look forward to that holiday event. I did want to mention, in the recent past, I talked about how the city has had two very in-depth and extensive collaborative meetings with the Golden Gate National Recreation Area about Maury Point issues, and I know that council members have spoken about that previously. Mayor Protam Beer and Councilmember Vado Ross participated in that meeting. And we have followed up on that meeting with a thank you letter to them and kind of to memorialize the next action steps that were agreed to. And that letter will be available on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee website for folks to view. Similarly, we had the mayor, Mayor Protam, participate in a very extensive meeting with Caltrans about a whole host of issues that we worked closely with them on and wanted to receive updates about. And we, you know, from traffic safety to vegetation management, you know, you name it, lane striping, et cetera. And we had followed up with a memorialization letter as follow-up actions on that meeting as well. I don't have a webpage location where that letter is available, but it is publicly available. I wanted to mention that at the December 13th city council meeting, this is a follow-up and relates a little bit to the mayor's comments about the marketing step gap analysis that was completed. On December 13th, which is our council reorganization meeting and the last council meeting of the calendar year, we will be having two important study sessions prior to the meeting. So one will be about the CDA. I think it stands for Creative Digital Agency, perhaps, but it's with a D as in digital. We'll have, we'll have a in-depth joint study session between council and the Economic Development Committee to dig into that report and talk about next steps regarding economic development or regarding marketing strategy. Kind of related, but a little different. The other study session is going to be an overview of the Vision 2025 and Beyond Study and Process that we'll be launching this winter. So two important study sessions to wrap up the calendar year. I did want to mention, and Chief Financial Sustainability Officer Carter can add more if she would like, but one of the economic development tools that's being launched currently, and the first in the county to do this with a company named Gifti, is a Pacifica-specific shop local gift card concept. And so more information will be coming out later this week or early next week to announce that program. Outreach has already been done to businesses, because any business can participate. But it's essentially, the concept is essentially that you would buy a card, put $100 on it, and you can use it at any participating businesses in Pacifica. So it's like a local credit card, right? And, or local gift card, I should say. You could give those gifts to, to your friends and family. So I wanted to mention that, keep an eye out. We'll be pushing that out on social media. And lastly, I did want to talk about the general plan schedule. There were comments about that during oral communications. And so I just want to be very clear, it seems like I do mention this every, every month at council, is that the, there's a general plan, work plan, and the council priorities work plan. It's available on the website. It specifically talks about the milestones and schedule for the general plan update. In the background and analysis section, or I should say the current status section, it talks about how in 2019, there were five different community meetings for input on the general plan. And the EIR is under development. In terms of the schedule, we anticipate it to be released for public review and comment in mid-December. And it's a 45-day comment period. So that comment period will run well through January. So I understand the comments from the public about over the holiday, but it's a 45, a month and a half long comment period. So I wanted to make sure to clearly put that out there and to say that, you know, after the 45-day review, what happens in the sequel review process, this review on the EIR, is that we need to prepare the responses to comments. And then that leads to the planning commission and city council hearings for adoption of the general plan. So that's an overview of the current schedule anticipated for the general plan, and we don't have the precise release date in December, but that's what we're working hard towards. And that concludes my update.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. And I am wondering if we want a little break before we go on, or shall we forge ahead with the reordered agenda? Mayor Protam, did you want to make a comment? Okay, five-minute break?
Yes.
Five, it's 8:15. We'll come back at 8:20. Thank you.
For a moment, ask Kevin to speak about the library hours. I apparently misspoke.
Oh.
It's red. So Kevin, can, are you there?
Certainly.
Yeah, can you please correct my statement? I read it wrong. Thank you.
Sure. Well, yeah, I'm happy to. And actually, you weren't incorrect, Councilmember O'Neill, because the library, JPAY, has approved the one additional hour at all the libraries to make scheduling very consistent between the cities. What was additional and specific to Brisbane and Pacifica is a six-month pilot program for the remainder of this fiscal year, because the JPA has COVID-related financial savings to add hours to the Sharp Park Library. And the specifics about the use of those hours up to perhaps 15 or 18 additional hours are yet to be developed. But the idea is to still have hours and the self-serve kiosks that will be installed at the Sanchez Library, but have additional hours at the main branch library, so Pacificans can experience what it's like to have a full-service, you know, seven days a week library at the main branch. And so those details, we're working on with the library, county libraries, and those will be announced, not starting until January. So announcement will come out prior to that start. That was it, just in addition to what you identified.
Yeah, thank you for correcting me on that. I kind of misread it when I was reading it off the, you know, the thing. Thank you.
And along that line, it occurred to me, we talked about the tree lighting on the 5th of December, but I'm not sure we heard anything about the 4th of December. Is there not an elf market that day? I think I read something about that in Connect with Pacifica, from 10 to 4 that day?
Yes, there is an elf market, and if Director Perez is available, perhaps he can add details to that. But you're correct, and we'll be broadcasting out that information.
Okay.
There's Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi.
Good evening, council members. Michael Perez, PV and Heart Director. Yeah, I don't have too much more to add to that. You got that right, Mayor. It's 10 to 4 on December 4th, and it's a little, our first one back since COVID, so it's a little, a little smaller and a little less stuff. And, you know, we're working around some of the building issues as well. And also, there is a parade the next day, and we'll have more information coming out about that. So Councilmember O'Neill was also right with that. And then we're also teaming up with the chamber, and there's going to be some letters to Santa and holiday decorating contests, which we also had that last year and work with them. So there'll be some mailboxes around, and there'll be a little more communication. It's going to, I think Connect with Pacifica comes out early this week, so you'll see that information in there as well.
I did get an email, and I don't, I can't find it right now, but something about Sharp Park is having a merchant walk. Did anybody else get that one? I guess not. Okay. I think it was before our next meeting is why we're not, we'll check. It's on the Facebook, so check that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, everyone, for indulging us. It's just, we're so excited to see some of our holiday traditions being reinstated, and want to make sure that information gets out to the community, and this is a nice way to help make that happen. So with that said, we are going to, the item formerly, or in fact, item seven, yes, on the agenda, is that correct, Director Peterson?
Yes.
And you have the staff report for us. This is introduction of an ordinance adding Article 7, mandatory organics waste disposal to Chapter 5 within Title 6 of the Pacifica Municipal Code pertaining to mandatory organic waste disposal reduction in compliance with Senate Bill 1383. In addition to Director Peterson, we have Chris Porter, of course, our general manager from Recology, Cara Morgan, Ken Ye, and Emily Webb from CalRecycle, Jack Johnson from the County Office of Sustainability, and Anita Reese from the Pacifica Resource Center. Thank you all for being here tonight. Please go ahead, Director Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council members. Again, I do want to acknowledge, as all the names that the mayor just mentioned, of folks that have been behind this big effort, which is a big lift, and it does take a village. So thank you all. Also wanted to give a shout out to our Assistant City Attorney Vazano, who helped quite a bit on this as well. So tonight, we are asking that the council move to introduce an ordinance adding Article 7, mandatory organic waste disposal to Chapter 5 within Title 6, trash recycling of the Pacifica Municipal Code related to Senate Bill 1383. Next slide, please. So Senate Bill 1383 was signed into law back in September of 2016 by then-Governor Jerry Brown. And what it is supposed to do is target organic waste reduction, including food scraps. And it does require all jurisdictions throughout California to adopt an ordinance by January 1st of 2022. And these ordinance revisions that we need to adopt are generally related to organic collection, edible food recovery, recovered organic waste product procurement, inspection, enforcement, and outreach. Next slide, please. So the reason that this was ultimately put into law in California is because organic waste is the largest waste stream in California. And as you can see from this chart, it actually makes up for 52% of the waste that goes into our landfills. Next slide, please. And putting this in our landfills is causing negative impacts in California, specifically climate change. When it does go into our landfills, it turns into a super pollutant, which is methane gas. And that methane gas has been tied to climate change, things such as our extreme fires and drought. Next slide, please. So Senate Bill 1383 does have some specific goal and regulation dates. When it was put in place, it was hoped that one of the goals they would meet was by 2020, they'd have a 50% reduction in landfill organic waste. By 2022, as mentioned, the regulations take effect, all cities have to have their ordinances in place. And by 2025, the goal is to have a 75% reduction in landfill organic waste, and also a 20% of our currently disposed edible food recovered for human consumption. Next slide, please. So some key dates for us for Senate Bill 1383 here at the city is January 1st of 2022. We do have to have our organic collection service to all residents and businesses in place. We need to have established an edible food recovery program. We need to be doing inspection and outreach, and we need to buy products using recovered organic waste. By January 1st, 2024, the city does need to take action for noncompliance of the law. Next slide, please. So to get into some of the details of Senate Bill 1383, one of the parts is regarding mandatory organic collection and outreach. And what the law says is that we must provide organic waste collection for all single-family dwellings, all multifamily units, and all businesses, and do outreach to these different groups. Now, we're very lucky, because Recology, actually back in 2010, put in place organic collection for all single-family dwellings within Pacifica. And they actually have organic collection today for 60% of our businesses, and some of those are multifamily. However, we currently don't have multifamily that are 20 units or more that are participating in the organic collection, so we'll need to get them on board. Recology has been doing a great amount of outreach, Chris Porter specifically contacting businesses that don't subscribe, and personally going out and visiting them and talking to them. The city will also be sending out letters and notifying all multifamily 20 unit or more of the law, and we're going to be working with Recology on getting them into compliance as well. Another element of Senate Bill 1383 is the edible food recovery program. And what it says is we have to establish an edible food recovery program starting next year. We were in front of council at the beginning of October, at the October 11th council meeting. And at that meeting, the council, you will probably recall, approved a memorandum of understanding with San Mateo County Office of And at that meeting, the council, you will probably recall, approved a memorandum of understanding with San Mateo County Office of Sustainability to implement a countywide edible food recovery program. So once again, we are fortunate that county is going to take this on for the cities of San Mateo County and they will be managing that program. The County Office of Sustainability is going to be working very closely with a key partner right here in Pacifica, which is I need to reset the Pacifica Resource Center to recover edible waste from the food generators that are within the city. Next slide, please. So another element of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is the recovered organic waste product procurement. And what the law says is we need to be procuring recycled content paper products and also recovered organic products. The way that we put the ordinance together, it notes that the city is going to comply with this through adoption of a recovered organic waste procurement policy, which we will be bringing to council at the next meeting. And this policy will require purchase of thirty percent recycled content paper. Additional recovered organic procurement is also required under the law and there are specific areas that you are allowed to procure in. So you can get heat from renewable gas, electricity from renewable gas or biomass, biofuel, mulch or compost. Now we're talking with Peninsula Clean Energy, PGA E. It appears that, you know, we would not be eligible for the electricity organic procurement that's actually listed in the law because they they aren't procuring their electricity in that manner. So we would most likely be falling in needing to procure mulch or compost. And we currently are working with Recology. We're also hoping to continue working with the county and others on the most cost effective method that the city can meet this requirement. As noted in the report, there was an estimate that we're given from the county that the cost for this could be anywhere from one hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand dollars a year. So another element of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is the inspection and enforcement component. And what this says is that we do need to start our inspections to verify compliance starting January first of twenty twenty-two. And then again, as mentioned, the city enforcement needs to start January first, twenty twenty-four. So the city currently is working with Recology and we will be working with them on inspections and reporting on elements other than edible food recovery component, which is going to be managed, as I mentioned, by the County Office of Sustainability. There will be enforcement when that takes takes effect. And the penalties will be a hundred dollars for the first infraction, two hundred dollars for the second infraction and five hundred dollars for the third infraction. Again, the city would be managing enforcement on all the elements with the exception of the edible food recovery portion of the program and the county will be managing that. Next slide, please. So again, our recommendation tonight is for the council to move forward to introduce by title and waive further reading of the ordinance adding Article Seven, mandatory organics waste disposal reduction to Chapter Five within Title Six of the Pacifica Municipal Code pertaining to mandatory waste disposal reduction and finding the ordinance exempt pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. Next slide, please. So now's the time for questions. I am available to answer any questions. We also do have our Assistant City Attorney Razano is available and here to help also. And thanks once again to them and many of these, many of these folks also sat through the last meeting, hoping to have a chance to answer your questions when we got cut off by Comcast. But they're here tonight to help with any questions that you may have. We have Chris Porter from Recology, Cal Recycle, we have Kara Morgan, Ken Yi and Emily Webb. We actually also have Carla Miller. So they've given another person tonight for us to get information from if we need it, from the County Office of Sustainability, Jack Johnson and from the Pacifica Resource Center, Anita Reese.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that report. I know that there are council questions on this and I'm wondering if there are initial questions that any council member wishes to ask or any sort of clarification? Or if you would prefer, we can go ahead to public comment and bring it back to council after.
Public comments, okay with me?
A book comment.
All right. That would entail Mr. Montemeyer helping us out. Thank you very much.
I am not seeing any hands raised right now, Madam Mayor.
Very well, back to council. And we'll close public comment on this item.
Um, I don't really have any additional questions because we've covered this back in October, right? Unless there's been some change since October, it's pretty straightforward.
Uh, I do have a question or two on the difference that I understand. I don't think we addressed in October. I think in October we were focused on edible food recovery primarily and the arrangements with the county, Mr. Johnson, hi, for the the Office of Sustainability. In regard, my specific questions, and you don't have to answer them right now, maybe we'll sit here from Councilmember Big Stick and then we can address everything at once. But I have specific questions about the composting component of this law change and what impact we foresee that having for Pacifica, the city, the ratepayers and and how we're beginning to address that. And I am sensitive to the fact that you said you were bringing some things back to us in January, I think, or at the next meeting. But if there's anything you can give us more information about that piece, I would really appreciate it. And Councilmember Big Stick, why don't you add your questions to the mix and then we'll have a question answering phase?
I I think my question is essentially exactly the same as yours. I just feel like articulating it in the most general and ignorant way I possibly can think to. And the the way I wish to phrase it is, so that recovered organic waste procurement, excuse me, recovered organic waste product procurement piece, how we do that? That, and I wasn't expecting someone from Cal Recycle to be here, honestly, or maybe I would have figured out a more nuanced approach to that question, but it seems like reading that staff report, that was the piece that kind of just stuck in my throat. And I was trying to process it and wanted to process it and I want this to get done the right way. And as I'm going through, I'm like, how we do that? And since we do have representatives from Cal Recycle, maybe you can help me to figure this out a little bit and the rest of us for that matter. Thank you.
Sure. And I can jump in first. As as mentioned in the report, I think the, you know, city of Pacifica, you know, we're still in the process of trying to figure this out from a staff perspective. And I think we are very fortunate because we do have four folks from Cal Recycle and Kara Morgan, I believe, is the expert in this area. So so maybe she can help with, you know, how other other cities are addressing this, especially those that have to meet it through a mulch or or compost.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you for the questions. You know, I think that procurement is a challenge for, gosh, almost every jurisdiction across the state. And I think it's something over the next year, we're all going to be working on. The target was established based upon the amount of material that we would be generating and collecting and recycling in the year twenty twenty-five. So I think initially, because there will be, as you already mentioned, challenges with market supply, I think that's going to create some challenges. What we're really looking for is jurisdictions to really explore, establish your baseline. What are you already procuring? What could be procured? Which is what, you know, the city staff are doing along with the other jurisdictions led by San Mateo County. We're also doing a lot of sharing across the state. We plan to do a statewide webinar in the first part of the year to share what jurisdictions are doing across the state. It's a variety of things to, you know, establishing a baseline, looking at options for what can the hauler procure as a direct service provider, opportunities for utilizing compost at community gardens so that residents can easily access compost. There's a lot of creative solutions that are happening, different parts of the state with direct service providers and providing product to ag agriculture, rangelands and the like. The material also doesn't have to be procured within the jurisdiction. So you know, Recology also is exploring a lot of options. So I think this is something that's going to mature over time. And we plan to provide support to the city and all of the San Mateo jurisdictions as we start really moving forward and figuring out how to procure the the target that that the city has and other cities have. So I hope that's helpful. I can provide more specifics and I'm happy to follow up and make sure your staff have access to a presentation that we did to the California Purchasing Professionals organization, sharing some of the early ideas that jurisdictions are pursuing in this area. Thank you for the question. I hope that was helpful.
Thanks a lot for your for your answer. And and I I see that Mr. Johnson has his hand up and I will call on him in a second. I I do want to explore with you the question about it's not just the city, obviously, that procures. And so I'm thinking about our, you know, larger businesses in town, primarily our school district and how the jurisdictions that are really under other jurisdictions, as you say, you know, they have, they have a board, Jefferson Union High School District has a board. Our water district has a board and those are just the public agencies that are affected, but such, you know, we've got Safeway is a major employer in in Pacifica. So I'm I'm trying to understand the deadline. Because, you know, we're pretty deadline driven. We really want to make sure we meet all the targets. And being we don't have a whole lot of information on this right now, I'm, I guess I'm assuming and I'd love to hear more about what are the deadlines and how do you anticipate that's going to roll out?
Sure. Great questions, Mayor. So first, all of those entities could potentially be direct service providers to the city. If they were willing to, if they purchased compost or mulch and were willing to have a direct service provider agreement, which could be an MOU, a written letter, it has to be a written agreement. So I think those are all avenues to explore. There are other jurisdictions that are exploring similar direct service provider relationships and that's allowed in the regulations. So the way that the procurement target is set up, it is intended to have the target be achieved by the end of the the year. So this would be January one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So you have all of that year to be working on it. I think what's important also is Cal Recycle recognizes the challenge, particularly with the procurement as it relates to market supply. So, you know, if we were to conduct a compliance evaluation of the city, we would look at the totality of your circumstances, all that you explored, put in place, were there market supply issues, et cetera? And we would take all of that into consideration in doing an evaluation. I think procurement is going to be a challenge again across the state. And I think especially in year one and year two. So really looking for your team and I know Jack's going to speak with the county staff to really be exploring creative options and to be, you know, putting in actions. You may not hit your target by the end of twenty twenty-two, but we're looking for that progress and then for us to continue working on this. And for Cal Recycle to continue to provide good examples and sharing information on what's working amongst all jurisdictions. I hope that was helpful, Mayor. It might be good to hear from Jack as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Please, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. I can't speak to your target. I can only speak to what my office has done and is willing to do. We intend to work to offer opportunities to work collaboratively as a whole county, all the jurisdictions, to achieve our goals together. We've hosted webinars already. We addressed the regional planning, RICAP's meeting last Tuesday. We've entered into cooperation with our RCD and other compost brokers. We're going to provide all the jurisdictions the opportunity to work together to address the issue. I can't do anything about what your target number is. I can't do anything about the costs. I can only offer my offices and the counties willingness to address the issue as a county and as a region. We are meeting with our consultants tomorrow to talk about our gate's capacity and our planning obligations and how we will be in communication with you all in the near future. I, 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 nobody in this county, I don't think anybody in this state is going to meet their target in this year, probably not in the next year. I think I think Cal Recycle knows that. I I'm not worried about it, frankly. You can only do so much in so much amount of time. And and the thing is, is we're in this for the long haul. This legislation is for now forever. And this is the first step and it's an important one. And I think Pacifica knows the effects of climate change better than anyone. And we're willing to help you all. And I just want you all to know that you're not alone in this and we will do whatever we can and I'll meet with you all as often as it takes to make you all more comfortable with this. And I can't do anything about the target or the costs. I apologize for that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add on to Jack's point. And Jack is so great. And I really appreciate the county's leadership and willingness to help the cities. I I did want to share also Cal Recycle on January nineteenth and twentieth will be holding a compost best management practices workshop for jurisdictions across the state. Because we've heard from some jurisdictions, they're like, we've never really utilized compost and mulch before and we want to make sure we're doing it right. And so we will make sure that your staff, as well as all the San Mateo County jurisdictions, receive that information. And that's the kind of learning as Jack mentioned, that I think we're all going to be going through, particularly over the next year. I hope that was helpful, Mayor.
Thank you. I think it was. I wanted to ask Chris Porter if she has anything specific to add on to the information that we've had in regard to the organics. If there's anything you need to say to us about it right now.
Nothing really more to add, just that we are actively working with all the businesses on a daily basis. And we'll be ready to go January one.
Really appreciate your leadership on this. And I know I remember when we had our rate discussion last year, we were talking about the the pickups at the residential. So it sounds like you're applying the same forward thinking in terms of working with the the multi-family housing areas and the businesses. And I appreciate your your help and your leadership on that and support with our city staff because that's got to be huge.
Big job.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. All right, council members, it doesn't look like there are any further questions on this topic at this time, although we I'm just going to say for the record, reserve the right to to ask questions going forward since Mr. Johnson did offer. So profusely, thank you very much. It looks like Tiger has a question. Please go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, please do.
And I want to echo what the mayor just said. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I thank you, Ms. Morgan. Appreciate it. And Director Peterson, thank you. Chris, thank you. What else? You in a moment? And I'm going to thank Anita also. Well, I was torn because I know I'm going to see Chris for the next item. So I was like, well,
We can thank her then too.
But then it occurred to me I should be thanking her every second I can, can. So so thank you and thank you and thank you. I introduce, I move that we introduce by title and waive further reading of ordinance adding Article Seven, mandatory organics waste disposal reduction to Chapter Five within Title Six of the Pacifica Municipal Code pertaining to mandatory organic waste disposal reduction, finding the ordinance exempt pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA.
I have a motion by Councilmember Big Stick with a second by Mayor Pro Tem Beer. I'll start the rule call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your support and we look forward to continuing working with you. We are moving to item. We are moving to item formerly known as item six. In fact, item six is it is labeled as item six on our agenda. And it is specifically to adopt a resolution of the City of Pacifica confirming the five point five one percent rate adjustment per ecology of the coast's rate application for the period of January one, twenty twenty two, to December thirty one, twenty twenty two. And we have Lisa Peterson to present the staff report and General Manager of Recology, Chris Porter, here to answer questions for the council. Director Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. And of course, that's correct. Joining us tonight is Chris Porter, who is the General Manager for Ecology of the Coast and also the city's solid waste service provider. So tonight, staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution confirming a five point five one percent rate adjustment for ecology for the period from January first, twenty twenty two, to December thirty first, twenty twenty two. The city did enter into an agreement, franchise agreement with ecology back into that twenty ten for collection of recyclables, organic solid waste. That agreement was amended in twenty sixteen for a five-year extension. On September twenty seventh of this year, the council adopted a resolution for staff to issue a notice for tonight's public hearing. And we did send us send this out more than forty five days before the public hearing. The city's agreement with ecology, section specifically section eleven point oh two, does allow for ecology to request a yearly increase, either based on cost or index, and this is currently in index year. And ecology is requesting a five point five one percent in increase based on the consumer price index, which, you know, has increased their operational costs and has been significant this year. And and also is noted in the report, also included in these costs are costs related to the fleet replacement that had to happen and were required by the California Air Resources Board to reduce vehicle admission. Additionally, as we just mentioned, we have Senate Bill thirteen eighty three, and so Senate Bill thirteen eighty three is adding costs as well. So included in the costs are costs for expanding the organic service to commercial and multifamily residences and customers. So as part of the public hearing tonight, ratepayers can protest this increase. And Proposition two eighteen defines a successful protest as fifty percent plus one of the ratepayers. So as of today, last when I last talked with the city clerk coffee, there were eight protests of approximately eleven thousand eight hundred thirty three customers, or about zero point zero seven percent of the ratepayers. So after public comment tonight, Clerk Coffee will tabulate all of the protests, including the public comments to date, and she will provide that total to the council. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm here to help answering questions, and of course, Chris Porter as well from Ecology of the Coast. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, council, shall we follow the same course of action? Go to public comment first. This is a public hearing, if I understand it correctly, city attorney. I'm looking for her box. There she is.
Public hearing, not a mayor.
So I would not open public comment, but open the public hearing for this item.
Correct.
Mr. Montemayor, and I'm opening the public hearing for this item.
Public comment.
Hearing.
Madam, I see no hands raised at this time.
Very well. That closes the public hearing, brings it back to council for questions and deliberation. And I will start because I see no hands at the present.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can we, I believe the clerk was going to tabulate the votes at this point.
Oh, I thought that was going to be at the end of the the item. I'm sorry. Please go ahead, city clerk.
Yes, Mayor Beckmeyer and council, we have had a total of eight written protests in response to the proposed ecology rate adjustment. And the requirement is a majority of the ratepayers to protest for contesting, successfully contesting the rate adjustment.
Okay. Thank you. All right, questions or deliberations? I did want to explore the issue of increased costs. Chris Porter, if you can help us understand the many ways in which costs are increasing. And I I'm specifically aware that we've had an increase in in the city of what I call dumping. I think there's a more elegant term for it, but abandoned property or personal refuse being dumped in city cans and on city property or anywhere, and how that impacts our cost structure.
Yes, beginning January one, the ecology did take over dumping all the city cans, the bus stop cans, and abandoned waste. Through this last Friday, there was two hundred and ninety nine tons, which is a huge number. That it's very easy for us to quantify that number now because we are using a special truck just for that that route. And that is a Sunday through Saturday route. That is a new thing we've taken on. The three main items that are contributing to the rate increase is, of course, SB thirteen eighty three, all of the new programs, the reporting. Fuel, which is another huge jump. And, oh, God, this went out of my went out of my head. Fuel, SB thirteen eighty three, and, oh, the carb, the trucks that had to be replaced by the state. So two of the items that are leading the rate increase are mandated by the state for us this year. I also want to just bring up to council that during the COVID crisis, we lost significant revenues when all the businesses were closed down. Now, we couldn't stop operating, and I'm very proud to say that our company did not miss one pickup from March twentieth of two thousand twenty to the present. We didn't miss a pickup. We weren't late. We weren't delayed. And I I mean, this is a a big pat on the back to my staff.
Yeah.
So those are the main contributors to the rate increase. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. I saw a couple of hands going up. I see Councilmember Vaterlos. Oh, you're muted.
Instead of putting my hand down, I muted myself. I just wanted to say thank you because there has been so much additional trash out. And one day I called recology and before I was even off the phone, recology was there picking up the the mattresses and et cetera that people had dumped, and I just really appreciate it. I think that the street trash has gone down considerably, and not because it's gone down, it's because you guys have been picking it up. So thank you so much for all that hard work, the extra hard work that you're doing.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I also want to echo what Councilmember Vaterlos said, you know, that I I think really considering all of the work that has been going on through ecology, especially through COVID. I mean, you know, we didn't have to go out there and pick up garbage, did we? Right? And there's so much more work that that you've had to do because of that with all the takeout containers and all those things. So thank you for for putting an extra route in and doing doing all of that. We really, really appreciate you. And we know that SB thirteen eighty three is going to be a ton of of work and a ton of back and forth and figuring it out, it should go along. And so thank you for for being willing to do that.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chris Porter. This is the part where I can give that robust thank you that I stumbled over during the last item. And I I am acutely aware of how many pains you take to make sure that this community is well addressed in every way you can think to and in every way that we all think to solicit your help in making this a better community. And all these costs going up and all these mandates from the state, and I'm struck by you know, I appreciate that it's going up, and I appreciate that that's not going to be easy for some people. But I also appreciate that you are somebody who I'm sure has taken pains to do everything you can to bring us the most minimal rise in rates you possibly could, and that's predicate on absolutely everything else you do for our community. So a hundred thank yous to you. And thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neill.
Yeah, I also wanted to say thank you to Chris and her staff. I think the complaints we used to get for overfilled garbage cans, the trash on the beach, the dumping have greatly been reduced since recology has taken that over, and they've done a great service. And what I'm especially proud about that is that they are paying a living wage to their employees. They have benefits. We don't, we are, you know, so we are, they are truly looking at the total community in terms of environmental living conditions and support of the city and the citizens because the complaints for cans and dumping and and everything else have all gone down dramatically the last year since you took it over. So I just wanted to say thank you, Chris. It's so nice on Monday nights, council meeting, I get to, after the council meeting, bring my can out and it magically disappears along with the agenda. Yeah, so thank you, Chris. Yes.
So I love how you mentioned living wage, Councilmember O'Neill. Thank you for that. That's really important.
Actually, I, you know, on that note, I I had asked Chris recently about how many, not to a number, but you know, the issue of a a member of people who work for recology living in Pacifica. So, you know, there are neighbors, there are service providers, and just like we with our own city employees recently settling our collective bargaining agreements, we know where the values lie in that within the city. And so it's really, really exciting and and gratifying to work with a partner in recology that has the same values. Thanks, Chris, and recology.
Can I say one more thing? I'd really like to thank Lisa Peterson for allowing me to be her partner and work with her. I think that we make a really good team, and we've got a lot accomplished in a very short time. So thank you, Lisa.
And thanks right back.
All right, council.
I actually think the majority of your employees are Pacifica residents, aren't they, Chris?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the item as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, with the motion by Councilmember O'Neill and seconded.
City Attorney, do you need to jump in here?
I do. I wanted to say that it's there is a resolution attached to the package, so I would just wanted to clarify that Councilmember O'Neill's motion was to adopt the resolution proposed by staff.
Yeah, move that the city council adopt a resolution to the City of Pacifica confirming the five point five one rate adjustment per ecology of the coast's rate application for the period of January one, twenty twenty two, to December thirty first, twenty twenty two, and finding the rate adjustment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you, Denise.
And seconded.
Uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes, and thank you, Lisa, as well.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Peterson, for all your work. Good night, Chris.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
Night, Chris. Thank you.
All right, council members. We are moving on to item eight. Or did you want a small break before we move on to item eight? I just saw Mayor Pro Tem. Are you okay? Do you want to make have a tiny break or no? Go on.
No, I'm okay.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. So item eight is resolutions authorizing a lease financing to finance a portion of the construction of the Civic Center Campus Improvement Project. It's a little bit of a complicated item, so there are several resolutions that we will need to move to adopt. And I'm going to rely on our esteemed staff and city attorney and city manager to guide us through this process. Presenting the staff report tonight is our Chief Sustainability, Chief Fiscal Sustainability Officer, Yulia Carter. And she's brought financial consultants Peter Wong and Chuck Adams, and she will give us further insight into that. Ms. Carter, please go ahead.
Mayor Beckmeyer, I just wanted to quickly kick it off to extend my thanks to Ms. Carter, as well as the financing team. You're going to hear a series of what seem like complex resolutions, but we've attempted to simplify it. I think you'll see a graphic that one of the council members had suggested to me, and we've conjured up something so that will help with this. But as with most public financing, public borrowings, they they are a little bit complicated, but I I don't want to steal the thunder, but just want to say that we, with the with the diligent work of the team, we put out a very and received very competitive bids for the four million dollar loan portion of the Civic Center project coming in at an incredible rate and incredible term, incredible terms, length of terms, as well as other parameters of the loan. And so you'll see that covered, and it's just great news on that front in in this economy. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Carter, please go ahead.
Definitely. Well, thank you so much for for this introduction, and again, the item before you tonight is the approval of the lease financing for the Civic Center renovation project. As the mayor said, we have Peter Wong, the city's financial advisor, and Chief Adams, the city's bond counsel with us tonight to provide additional details on the financing structure and answer any questions you may have. And as the city manager mentioned, we are really excited to share this news with you tonight. Next slide. This meeting is being held as a joint meeting of the city council and the Pacifica Financing Authority. So there are four resolutions before you tonight to complete the approval of this financing. The first two resolutions as listed here are resolutions of the city council to approve a lease financing of four million dollars to fund a portion of the Civic Center renovation project. And the second resolution is approving the removal of the property from the prior financing agreement related to the two thousand sixteen refinding of the certificates of participation. And you also see the two identical resolutions of the Board of Directors of the Pacifica Financing Authority. And Mr. Adams will review in details how the financing works and explain this requirement in the flow chart format, as the city manager mentioned earlier. So hopefully it will further clarify the So hopefully it will further clarify the the process. Next slide. Uh, before I turn it to Peter, I just wanted to share a brief background on the subject. As you may remember, the city council provided input on the Civic Center Renovation Conceptual Design. Uh, with the estimated budget of ten million dollars and uh approved the funding strategy on April twenty-sixth of this year. Uh, the funding strategy included six million dollars in various one-time sources of funding that we already included in the um project, uh budget for this year. And the remaining four million were going to be financed. Uh, since that, we consulted with the city's financial advisor and determined that the most cost-efficient financing strategy for this. Remaining project balance would be pursuing the bank loan. And especially given the current low interest rate environment, uh we uh thought that would be the most prudent uh option to pursue. So we released the RFP to uh thirty financial institutions and uh. Received responses from seven banks. And uh before I turn it to uh Peter Wong, I just also want to extend my uh thanks and appreciation to the financing team. And both Peter and Chick were instrumental in making this happen. So this is really um exciting in exciting terms. And uh with that, um I wanted to turn it to Peter to go over the responses and the details of the selected um or proposed financing structure that is before you tonight.
Okay, yeah. Yes, first of all, thank you for inviting me to participate in this presentation. So I I'm Peter Wong uh from the firm of uh. Baxter MacCarley Berry. We're located in San Francisco, so we're we're local. And we've been involved in the the last four or five transactions for the city uh over the year. So we we appreciate uh. That, you know, you've uh. You know, engage us to help you with your financing. So very briefly, I mean, you see here. Uh, the results uh of the seven bits that the city received. Again, we we sent this to the thirty uh financial institutions. Uh, which is quite a lot, and we received seven bits, which is also uh fairly. Fairly, you know, well-received uh RFP. And if I go further, I I do encourage you to stop me along the way if you have questions. Um, and again, I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly because I think some of these are self-explanatory. In this chart, you see. Sterling National Bank came in with the best interest rate uh for fifteen-year loan and also for twenty-year loan. And you can see there in the in the column under a rate. Uh, so they're just far below. Other competitors in. And the other co- uh columns you see here is the estimated uh annual debt service, the total debt service, uh all in interest rates and so forth. Uh, so. Basically, the the bits are fairly uh objective and you can see, right, just go with the lowest rate, which is one, one point nine seven for fifteen-year. Uh, two point three for twenty years and and these are fairly aggressive uh. Aggressive rates. Um, the city, if we go to the next slide. Yeah, so so the city staff looked at. The various, uh the two options, fifteen versus twenty years. And how much of annual debt service would that uh entail? And they decided to go with a fifteen-year. The fifteen-year versus twenty-year uh over the life of those loans, uh the fifteen-year will save the city roughly three hundred eighty thousand dollars in lower interest payments. And so staff decided to go with that. The the proposed bank loan has a prepayment option that you can prepay the loan after two years. And so, and that's fairly attractive. So the average annual debt service payments uh is estimated to be literally over three hundred fourteen thousand a year. Um. And we structured the the payment so that in the first three, four years, it will just gradually increase rather than a big, you know, jump.
Peter?
Yes.
Do you want us to ask questions as you're going along, or do you want us to wait till the end?
Uh, my presentation is pretty short, so just stop me with your questions.
Okay, I'm okay either way. I just wanted to check with you. Okay, you have a prepayment available after two years. Is that at par or is there a? You know, the um. I'm forgetting the name of it.
There's a prepayment uh penalty.
There is a, and how much is that prepayment penalty?
If you prepay after two years between year two and year, uh let me. Make sure I got it right. It goes from hundred and two percent, a two percent premium down to par. In.
Okay, so it's one oh two? Okay.
Yes, it starts at one oh two. Yeah, having a prepayment helps because one never knows if, let's say, you get a uh. You know, grant funds, federal, state grant, and you decide to uh.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I just was concerning. I was just wanted to know about the prepayment penalty, that's all, and how much it was. Yeah, no, I agree with the prepayments. Nice. I mean, it's a little bit. Higher interest rate for that premium for that option than it is could in the long run.
I have a follow-up question to that.
Yes.
So like if um we suddenly had a million dollars that we wanted to put toward it, which would be over what we would normally do that year. Is there a penalty if if we hit that um area between the three and four years where there's the two percent for paying it off? Is that the same penalty on the principal if we were to pay more than we otherwise were going to that year?
Okay, first off, um this, the term sheet that the bank provided us does not allow the city to provide, to do any uh partial prepayment. You'll have to be retired entire loan. Or or no prepayment. Uh, so.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Um, then the other feature that was a bit of a uh pleasant surprise for us is like the bank was willing to commit. An additional million dollars. Uh, as a standby credit line. In the event the city, let's say, two years, within a two-year period decides. Uh, you want to borrow an additional million dollars without going through this whole process again. Again, this. If if the city were to do that, staff would have to come back to city council and. And get authorization for that extra million. Uh, but having that extra credit line approved by the bank, uh it just saves you. Basically, you know, administrative costs now to redo the whole process. Um, so that that's a something that is uh nice to have in your back pocket. That's an option.
Okay, so just to be sure, I understand that. That's additional one million dollar on a credit line. But that's also in addition to the possible credit line from the county of, what was it, ten million, I think we talked about? Back in April, so we actually have. Uh, the option to draw from the county or this line, correct?
Right, right. It's whatever is the most convenient uh to the city, you know, at that time. And I I think with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chick. Chick? Are you on mute?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. How about the next slide? Because that's what I'm going to be talking about. Can we bring that up? There we go. Okay, this is my effort to. Show graphically how the financing structure is uh working. Um, and I should introduce myself. Um, my name is Chick Adams. I'm with the law firm Jones Hall. We're a bond counsel firm in Sec- in San Francisco. Uh, we have worked with the city for over twenty-five years, and I personally have um participated in in virtually every one of the city's finances uh during that period of time. This is um uh the traditional way in which cities in California borrow money. The the other alternative, of course, is with the two-thirds vote to get a general bond authorization. Very few cities do that. It's a pretty high threshold to meet. So what cities do is they engage in a lease financing, and that's exactly what this is. So uh you have a lease and like every lease, it requires a counterparty. And in this case, we're um deciding to use the Financing Authority. Because that's a joint powers agency that the cit- city set up many years ago, I think in two thousand and three. And uh the uh Financing Authority is controlled by the city council, so it's always advisable to have a counterparty that you control. Um, you can see at the upper left-hand corner, there's a site lease. And this is for the Public Safety Building. The Public Safety Building has been identified by the consultants and staff. As being the preferable property to use as the subject matter of the lease. And if I can digress for just a minute, the uh other set, you have two sets of resolutions, basically. One approves the financing that we're talking about. And the other one approves amending two thousand sixteen uh COP documents to release the Public Safety Building from that financing. Uh, we've gone through the documents and determined that the release is permitted to take place. And the, there's a set of resolutions, one for the city council and one for the Financing Authority, and and that's what they do. They release the Public Safety Building from the prior transaction so that it can be used here. So the site lease, the city leases the Public Safety Building to the Financing Authority. Uh, in in consideration of that, the uh Financing Authority agrees to enter into an agreement with the lender, Sterling National Bank, to provide funding for the project. The uh debt service is repaid because the Financing Authority leases or subleases the property back to the city. You can see that in the upper right-hand corner, and the city agrees to pay semi-annual rent payments. We call them lease payments. And that is really a disguised way of paying principal and interest on the financing. Uh, it's for the full term of the financing. It is exactly equal to the four million dollar repayment at one point nine seven percent. And the Financing Authority, under the assignment agreement, then assigns that stream of payments. To the lender. The lender in return provides the four million dollars of funding. Deposited with the city into a project fund, and the city spends the project fund to to build the project. So um. It looks like a lot of bells and whistles and smoke and mirrors, but at the end of the day, the city is essentially borrowing. Four million dollars and agreeing to repay it through the context of semi-annual lease payments. And the Public Safety Building is the property that is the subject matter of the lease. So the resolution for the city council and the Financing Authority tonight that approved the the basic transaction. Approved these documents and uh also authorized your staff to uh take all actions and sign all certificates that are needed to close it. The closing is scheduled for November thirtieth. It's a pretty tight time schedule, but the bank um had to close by the end of the month. In order to hold the one point nine seven percent rate. Um, I'm sure you know rates have been rising recently, so we're doing everything we can to close by the end of the month. And uh and and we will do that. So I I probably dumped a lot on you in a short period of time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question, um and I can't at the present with the slide on it, which I want the slide to stay there for a moment. Um, but I'm sorry, Sue Vado Los, I couldn't see your hand because I can only skip a few boxes.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
My question might have more to do with Yulia, but I'm gonna ask it anyway and we'll decide how to answer it. Um. In some transactions with the city, specifically when you do with enterprise funds and things like that, we sometimes see these large amounts on our books. And so when you were speaking about um the the payments that happened twice a year. I was wondering if that's going to be one of those instances where when we have our mid-year budget updates or our finance. Uh, documents are updated for the public, we're gonna need to clarify why these sort of large dollar amounts are kind of in and out. If that's the way it's going to look. So that's my, it's a roundabout question, but um I just wanted to know what impact. This arrangement may have on our financial documents that we disclose as part of our regular business with, for the city.
Oh, I can answer the budget uh side of your question. We, once we adopt the annual budget, the annual debt service payment will be included in the budget. With all the transfers that, if there are any transfers related to that. So there will not be additional transactions that will be outside of the budget that was already approved by council on the uh before the beginning of the fiscal year. So that that service payment will be within the budget allocation that is approved as part of the uh upcoming budget. And in order for us to uh include the proper, well, we we usually go by uh that service schedule to. And assume what this debt payment is going to be. So the documents in your um packets kind of given us this uh the structure for the upcoming years. And that's exactly what we are going to be budgeting.
I see.
If for whatever reason, any adjustments down the road, we will, well, or if the the line of credit is going to be used, we will, as Peter mentioned, we will have to.
Okay.
Come back to council, get additional approval, and that will, yes, change the debt service payment.
Okay, thank you. Sue Vado Los.
So Sterling Bank is going to put a lien on the Public Safety Building? I I think I finally got all this, the least thing through me, but I think I finally understand the back and forth. But is that, is that how it, that's where they put their lien for the loan?
Yeah, yeah, let me jump in. I can, I can probably address that. I do think that the bank looks at the Public Safety Building as collateral for the loan. Yes, uh, it's not, it's a, the lien takes the form of lease. I will say that um. They, the bank understands and in our legal opinion provides that um it probably is not an enforceable. Uh, it is probably not enforceable for the lender to take over or repossess the Public Safety Building. They understand that. It the, it's a public, it's a public purpose facility. And it, the odds of a court ever allowing them to to exercise remedies against the property are virtually non-existent. And. And we explain that in our legal opinion, and they understand it. But technically, it is a lease. Um, the lease, uh the 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 theory is that the city will not default on the payments because of the importance of the building to it. And that's what's really, I think, important to the bank from a lending standpoint.
It just basically makes them a secured lender instead of an unsecured lender in case of default and puts them higher on the food chain.
Right.
Ms. Ann?
I I was just gonna say, it's basically this, the same as Mike O'Neill owns the building. And then Mike O'Neill has a business, you know, let's say runs a restaurant in there. And he's just basically borrowing money. The restaurant's gonna pay it back, but he signed the lease. Oh, Mike O'Neill paid for the lease, so that's basically it.
Mr. Adams, you said you created this graphic?
Yes.
Thank you. Like, a lot.
Well, if you were the one who requested it, I think it was an excellent suggestion because uh sometimes a picture is worth a thousand.
Yeah, it it really helped me understand the flow. I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great suggestion.
All right, I can't see Councilmember Big Stick right now.
Yeah, I've I've got nothing.
Okay.
I I have one question is, as I I was looking back at the agenda from April, and it looks like. All the pieces are pretty much falling into place, and I have to congratulate. That the annual payments on this are actually less than they would have been if we had borrowed the money from the county. Because of the length of term, the county offered ten, we're getting fifteen. The only concern I have in regards to the whole thing, none of this issue at all. Is the fact that we just approved um labor agreements with our unions. And in order to give them the raise, we deferred positions, we may be a poly uh position, whatever. And I was, and I saw that if I was correct, the difference in payments is about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, a year between a fifteen and a twenty-year, if I remember that correctly, right? Um, and that's my only concern. I just wanted to voice. Um, and I don't know if other council members want to comment on that. That basically if we went with a twenty-year term instead of a fifteen-year term, you, we, that would be a a a hundred thousand of cash flow every year. That we could have, but if we did put it in a separate account, you know, we could possibly do, that that was news to me that it had to be a total. Prepayment, not a partial prepayment, right? There's no sinking fund, so I've just thrown that out as a comment, that's all.
Sure, I'm gonna have Sue Vado Los comment and then. Sure. I'm going to have Sue Vatterlos comment and then I have something to, go ahead, Sue.
So, someone else could probably answer this better, but if you look at the terms, it shows that the savings that we have by financing for only fifteen years instead of twenty. It's a, it's a large savings. Um, I can't remember the number. Sorry.
Can we go back to that slide, please?
Yeah. Let's do that because I think my comment is probably on that same slide. It was, no.
That would be the next slide. Sorry. Keep going. Yeah, this one.
Right. Okay, so council member O'Neill's point is?
I think if we go back to that, um, slide where all the banks are listed, that would be the better one. Right. So you see the total debt service on this is five million, fifty one, five million, one hundred thousand if we went twenty years. If we went fifteen years, it's four point seven million dollars. So it's a difference of four hundred thousand dollars. Okay, over a twenty year period. And the only comment or concern, I bet if you look, so you, you could see it, the difference in the annual debt service is what sixty? I'm just doing it off the top of my head and it is ten o'clock at night. Um, let's see, sixty, fifty, fifty four thousand. And I'm just concerned about that. That's, I just wanted to point it out more than raise it as an issue, basically.
And, um, I'm not, go ahead, Kevin, yes.
I was just going to add because it, it's relevant to the good point that council member O'Neill is making. Uh, one of the features of the, the loan is that we're deferring the principal in the initial year. So our initial payments are lower because we know our, our financial obligations related to labor and everything else in the upcoming years are a challenge. But so I believe the first year we owe eighty five thousand, then the next year it probably goes up a little bit and we probably have that schedule. But that help, helps us plan for future years down the line when we actually hit the uh, maximum payment of three hundred, uh, thousand.
And if I, if I can, um, add another comment, so if you remember, we added actually the placeholder for the debt service in this current year's budget. And I believe if the budget, the was about three hundred thousand, so the, we already assumed for the base budget. So that, that was another basis for our decision. Um, and as the city manager just mentioned, the, the negotiation with the bank includes different sum of this principle. So it will align, um, perfectly with the pension obligation bond obligation. So that service will be more prudent and then physically kind of structured for the upcoming years.
And when does the pension obligation bond, um, finish our, our payments?
I, I will have to double check the exact year, but in.
You, you don't, you don't have to, you don't have to turn that year. That's, that's fine. That's fine.
So Mike, on your, to your point then, um, uh, if I take the difference between those two terms, the twenty year and the fifteen year, in terms of do, total debt service, we're spending three hundred and eighty three thousand more to go for twenty instead of fifteen. Am, am I saying that wrong?
No, you are correct. Okay. But what I was mentioning, okay, and just wanted to point out is from a cash flow perspective.
Right.
We have the sixty thousand, what you're obligated to pay both your unions and employees and the debt is there's sixty thousand less mandatory obligation that could go towards something else. However, I, you know, fully acknowledge the fifteen year saves us money.
Right, exactly. I see what you're saying. It's on from a cash flow basis. We have more to work with on an annual basis in terms of our collective bargaining agreements and such, if we were to go with the twenty than the fifteen.
Correct. And, you know, we do have, um, some challenges with hers and the discount rate, et cetera, there. So that's the only issue. But again, in the total scheme of a thirty five million dollar budget, sixty thousand isn't that much. You know what I mean?
Yeah. And it's almost like, you know, it looks like our average annual debt service on the fifteen is three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. It's like adding another ye- year of that, the difference in cost if we go to a twenty.
Right. So it in essence makes it almost a, yeah, sixteen year, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but the recommendation, consultants and city manager and chief fiscal sustainability officer is for the fifteen year. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is. And it's just more, I just wanted to point out that basically, you know, looking at the total picture of the pie is what I was kind of talking about. So.
Okay. Uh, I can't say all the council members at this point. If anyone has anything else to add, please speak up. There you are. Okay, thank you. It doesn't seem like we have any further questions or conversation, discussion on this item. We've already closed our public hearing on this item. Isn't that right, city attorney? Where am I? There she is.
I didn't note that we took public comment. I thought we were still in questions.
Okay.
We have not taken public comment.
Oh, thank you, city. I'm so sorry. I was thinking of the previous item. All right then, if there are no further questions from council, I would like to have public comment.
I, I believe there's still maybe some slides in the presentation or, or we completed with the.
No, no, I believe the last slide was a repeat just the what actions you have before you. So you can, you can go to the next slide as you, as you're taking comments.
Adam Mayor, I'm seeing no hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, bring you back to council and ask our city attorney to guide us through the process of motions and resolutions.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So before you tonight, as, um, uh, as mentioned earlier, there are four resolutions. Two would be adopted, uh, by the city council and two would be adopted by the authority. I would recommend that we take each motion individually. And if, if it assists the council, we can put that slide back up um, so that it can be easily read by the council member making the motion.
And I'm prepared to move that we resolution of the city council approving a lease financing in the aggregate principal amount of four million to finance a portion of the construction of the civic center campus improvement project and authorizing the execution and delivery of the site lease agreement, lease agreement and assignment agreement and related documents.
I'll second.
And, uh, moved by council member O'Neill, seconded by Mayor Protem Beer for item eight dash one, uh, council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Vatterlos.
Yes.
Council member O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item eight dash one passes unanimously.
A move to adopt a resolution of the city council of City of Pacifica approving the removal of property financing agreements relating to two thousand sixteen refunding certificates of participation and authorizing the execution and delivery of related documents.
Second.
And item eight dash two moved by council member O'Neill, seconded by council member Vatterlos. Council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Vatterlos.
Yes.
Council member O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And eight dash two passes unanimously.
Eight dash three move to adopt a resolution of the board of directors of the City of Pacifica Financing Authority approving lease financing in the aggregate principal amount of four million to finance a portion of the construction of the civic center campus improvement project and authorizing the execution and delivery of the site lease agreement, lease agreement, assignment agreement and related documents.
I will second.
And with the motion by council member O'Neill as, uh, taking action as a member of the board of directors of the Pacifica Financing Authority, uh, seconded by Big Stick for item eight dash three. Call the roll call vote, starting with council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Vatterlos.
Yes.
Council member O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And eight dash three passes unanimously.
Resolution of the board of directors of the City of Pacifica Financing Authority approving the removal of property from financing agreement relating to two thousand sixteen refunding certificates of participation and authorize the execution and delivery of related documents.
I'll second.
And, uh, council member O'Neill, um, taking action on item eight dash four as a member of the board of directors of the City of Pacifica Financing Authority, seconded by Mayor Beckmeyer. Start the roll call vote with council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Vatterlos.
Yes.
Council member O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And eight dash four passes unanimously.
Thank you very much to our staff and our consultants for guiding us through this process and bringing us to this momentous moment in this project. It's a very important project to the city and, um, we thank you for your help. And council, if it's okay with you, I would like very much to take a five minute break before we move on to item nine. The ordinance development for continuation of outdoor commercial activities. So we'll come back at nine fifty. Regarding amendments to the Pacifica municipal code to allow the continuation of outdoor commercial activities. And we have presentation by Assistant City Manager and Director of Planning Tina Wermeyer and Josh Montemeyer, our management analyst, working with the planning department. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, city clerk, for putting that up. Uh, good evening. As stated, my name is Tina Wermeyer. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Planning Director. And tonight I'll be presenting the results of community feedback received regarding the development of a permanent ordinance for the continuation of outdoor commercial activities. Next slide. At the conclusion of this report, after hearing the survey results, staff will ask the council to provide, um, additional direction regarding ordinance develop and development and to confirm your previous direction. And as the mayor stated, I also wanted to acknowledge man, uh, management analyst Josh Montemeyer, who assisted with the development of the community surveys and the preparation of this agenda item. Next slide. So in August, the city council held a study session on this topic. The council heard from ten community members. Many of the comments focused on support of live entertainment in the outdoor setting. And some commenters were concerned about negative impacts to businesses as a result of noise associated with outdoor entertainment. At this meeting, the council provided feedback on several issues relevant to ordinance, the ordinance, including use of the right of way types of covered businesses that will be covered with the work by the ordinance and the permitting process. And this, um, feedback more specifically is summarized on packet page four seventy six. As a next step, staff identified obtaining community feedback, uh, via surveys and providing those results to council and then confirming the direction, which as I said, is the subject of this report. Next slide. First, I will, um, summarize the business survey. The business community survey was released on September twenty second directly to businesses with email addresses on file with the city. There were a hundred and thirty six responses. Of those ninety three percent support outdoor business activities in Pacifica in some capacity. Um, of the supportive respondents, seventy one percent said they support allowing any type of business to operate outdoors and sixteen percent supported outdoor dining activities only. Uh, about seventy three percent of businesses, uh, expressed concern about the parking in relation to parklets. Next slide. With regards to outdoor entertainment, uh, in conjunction with outdoor dining, uh, eighty five percent were in support and respondents who provided, who were able to provide just some free kind of typed in written responses, express interest in setting up specific parameters such as, uh, permitting entertainment on weekends only or having them end by a specific date or, so, excuse me, specific time. And in this way, um, this could address some of the concerns that were voiced. Next slide. And then staff worked with a flash vote, um, via a text survey to, um, to, to then poll the general public. That was launched on October eighteenth and it received three hundred and two local respondents. Eighty percent expressed support, uh, for any type of business to operate outdoors. Next slide. Uh, sixty two and a half percent indicated they visited an outdoor business and of those almost ninety percent rated their experience with outdoor businesses in Pacifica as either good or excellent. Two hundred and eighty seven local respondents provided their opinions about continuing outdoor activities post COVID. Um, parking noise and, including the parking noise and design. The results show that eighty three percent would like to see outdoor businesses continue after COVID. Sixty four percent would like to have outdoor business areas, even if they have to park farther away. So indicating maybe parking wasn't as big of an issue for the respondents. And six percent thought that noise from outdoor business areas is a problem. And fifty one percent said that they'd like outdoor business areas to be of quality design and construction. Next slide. Earlier this month, staff presented this survey data to the economic development committee and asked for their feedback to share with the city council. As a preliminary response to the community survey results regarding. As a preliminary response to the community survey results, uh, regarding the, the look or the design of parklets, staff introduced the concept to the EDC of pre-approved design specifications for parklets to assist small businesses with permitting requirements and accessibility features. Uh, the committee members were supportive of generally of co- continuing outdoor activities. Um, the issue of public use of parklets was discussed, and committee members felt that a not limiting the use of parklets to supporting business patrons will likely not be an issue. And they felt that the ordinance should also be mindful of business parking needs. The EDC also discussed coastal commission requirements. The coastal commission would need to certify a new ordinance before it becomes effective in the coastal zone. The coastal commission would be expected to carefully consider public access to the coast as it relates to the use of public parking spaces. But hopefully, they will also balance that with the provision of additional visitor-serving spaces in the, or areas in the coastal zone. Uh, next slide. So considering the summary of community input, staff would like to receive and confirm council direction on these following items, and I'll read them. One, should the ordinance require that parklets be available for the general public, not just the patrons of the business that is sponsoring that parklet area? Should density standards be developed to address parking considerations? So, um, if there happens to be multiple restaurants in a row, you know, should we consider some sort of, uh, limit on the number just to make sure that not all of the parking on the street is taken by parklets? Uh, should the city develop and offer pre-approved specifications and designs to improve outdoor activity area aesthetics? And also assist smaller businesses with meeting building code and ADA standards? And, and it, um, ease any per- permit impediments that that may produce for them. And, uh, should staff begin early conversations with the coastal commission regarding the ordinance? Next slide. And, uh, these are direction from the, um, August study section, session, and so just wanted to confirm that the council is still supportive of allowing you some of the right-of-way. We don't want to make that assumption. Um, is a clu- it is, um, would like to be inclusive to all types of businesses, not just, um, eating or dri- or dining or drinking. Um, that you still want to pursue a hybrid permitting approach, which would be um, administrative approval, but notifying the neighbors of that administrative decision, so they would have an option to appeal if they have any, if they have any concerns. Um, we, uh, we heard previous direction, want to confirm that there is, um, support for somehow in the ordinance recognizing existing outdoor activity licenses so they are not just starting from scratch. Um, to instead of making it a, um, a fee that would put in a deposit and then staff would charge time and materials, but that instead the council would, would direct us to, um, m- make a estimate of how much time staff will, um, spend processing these applications and develop a set fee for this new permit type. And then, um, continue to permit live entertainment and develop reasonable parameters on hours and days. And if you have any preliminary direction as to what hours and days those would be, you don't have to make any hard decisions now, but that would be helpful. I also, um, next slide. So before I just summarize next steps, I also wanted to acknowledge we received a written public comment before noon today from a member of the public. The commenter raised several important concerns, including ADA access and safety and also parking concerns. So this process that we're going through is intended to receive direction from council on these, these issues, which are, which are discussed in the staff report and the presentation. And of course, um, the ADA and safety, um, concerns are certainly code requirements and would need to, uh, be addressed regardless. So the next steps are that staff will, um, after receiving, um, the council's feedback, staff will begin drafting the permanent ordinance with the goal of presenting to the Planning Commission and City Council, uh, with an ordinance for consideration in early two thousand twenty-two. And then, um, after ordinance adoption for the areas in the coastal zone, we would then begin the permitting, um, or actually the certification process with the coastal commission. And that is the end of the presentation. Um, after there's comments and questions, we can certainly go back to this two slides that had the, um, points that we wanted the council's feedback on. Happy to answer any questions.
Um, Tina, would this be, okay, this is for outside, um, you know, service and stuff. Would this also and would these same regulations be in force for, let's say, the backyard of the business? Cause I know like Table Wine on Francisco, they have a patio in the back and they have people out there. So are we developing for both patios, which are totaling enclosed for a business, or just public spaces in front of businesses?
So I think that the, the main focus has been either parklets, sidewalks that are wide enough, or parking spaces. So, so what we're, we've been focusing on is areas where there could be some, some, um, I don't know if conflict's the right word, but there could be some conflict because there's, there's parking that is being taken up. Um, and there are safety considerations. I think you do raise a good point that under the current ordinance, any outdoor activity requires a use permit, including, you know, something in the, the backyard of the business. So, um, Table Wine, um, is a good example. And I think that, um, I'd like to make a note to make sure that we make that process incorporated into this ordinance so that it's easier, um, to do that.
Um, and also on another note, I know there are guidelines from the county, and there's actually a county initiative to encourage this of food at home. And part of, you know, pe- people being able to cook it in their own kitchen and then serve it. But there's some provisions from the county that allow people to actually, I cook it in my house and I invite you in and you're sitting at my kitchen table. You know what I mean? I forget. And there's a name for it. I forget what it's called. But are we gr- can s- will these regulations also cover that aspect of entrepreneurship or people working out of their house? And would it also cover food trucks setting up? You know, they park and then they set up something. Just, I kind of get the scope of the whole thing.
Sure. So, so first, the, um, the home occupation aspect that, um, the county, the county environmental health is, is, uh, involved in. There were one or two state bills passed recently which said that cities needed to and environmental health departments needed to revise their regulations in order to allow, you know, somebody who maybe makes homemade cookies or brownies or granola and goes to the farmer's market, that, that is something that previously was not allowed and, and should be allowed now. And so our, our ordinance is compliant with that. And I think it's very rare, um, at least in Pacifica, but technically there are, um, if environmental health will approve it, there, you could technically invite people in for a, um, you know, kind of high-end bespoke sort of dinner, um, in your house as, and, and charge for it. Um, so that, that is, that is already, um, covered in our home occupation ordinance as well as state law. And, um, the food truck setup is not going to be addressed by this ordinance. I think it's going to be something that we would need to address uh, when we were developing the council's work plan. But this is a multi-step process, so this is step one. And then there'll be more regulations that we'll need to work on for special events. And, and may include, um, other sort of um, food truck, cause food trucks, um, right now are covered on our ordinance and they, they, um, they can't stop in the right-of-way for more than just a few minutes.
Thank you, Tina.
Us, Sue Vataraas.
Um, I was thinking about the backyard issue. Um, Taco Bell, Interwine, um, even the burrito place, Guerrero's, they all have little backyards. Do they have to get permits? Because that's not affecting anybody else.
Yeah, yeah. So technically, I think you're right. I think that's one thing we want to resolve with this ordinance is, is technically our plain language of our current ordinance is that if it's outdoors, cause it maybe has the potential to impact a neighbor, you have to get a use permit. So Taco Bell, for example, already has an outdoor dining use permit. A La Playa restaurant has an outdoor dining use permit. Um, so there's, there's several of them that already exist and went through that process, but for those who maybe have now started to explore this other area of their property, we, we want to not, um, hinder that, I think, if they're, you know, we're gonna be not bothering everybody back there.
Actually, that Nix has a backyard, uh, Valmar Station has a patio. I mean, there's a, a lot of our restaurants have that aspect.
Um, and my biggest thing with this whole thing is cooperation with the neighbors, because I think that's where we had the most of our problems were that the neighbors had no idea and all of a sudden there's music playing and they're blocking the front of their stores and, um, I think that if everyone knew ahead that they could cooperate with each other and it wouldn't be such a dramatic item. But I've started thinking of all the places, like one uh, like say the Manor Safeway, they put tables out in front. Um, there are people who put things out on the sidewalk frequently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially, I was thinking about Manor. There are, there's another store that puts their items out in front. Is that public right-of-way? Is that private? Is that the sidewalk? There are so many things that are just like going through my head on this ordinance
Mm-hmm.
since I started reading it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that too, and I've noticed there's a particular, um, I don't know, business or individual or a group of individuals that are routinely having a sale in Palmetto area. Um, that seems to cover public right-of-way, sidewalk, that sort of thing. Um, and the ones that are in the, in the shopping centers, such as in Manor. Um, how that would be regulated in terms of ADA compliance and things like that, if it's on that private property. Uh, i- is that something that's a lease agreement between the vendor and the owner of the shopping center, or is that something they have to have the permit first? I have those same questions.
So the permit, I, I think, I think in the public's mind, the parklets on, on the street are, are salient, right? That's, that's what everybody thinks about. But really, this is an ordinance that we're developing for outdoor business activities. Now, if you happen to be on private property and you're, uh, maybe in the Manor Shopping Center, that is private property. Um, if you're outdoors, you still need to get the permit from us. It's just that instead of a license from the city to use the right-of-way, you will indicate with your permit application that you have permission of the property owner to use that space. You would still get this, go through this permit process.
So just a question, Ace recently has had some, you know, sidewalk sales, they called them, I think, in their parking lot. Would they need to get a permit for this, or is because it's all entirely on their property and not that often that they, they would not need to?
So, so little, um, special sales, I believe, is already covered in our ordinance. And so if you, if it's just a periodic spring sale, you know, clean out our shelves, it, um, we can do that. Honestly, many businesses just do it and they don't, they don't really ask, and it's, uh, you know, weekend or something and it's, and it's just fine. If this is a regular thing, they, they would come under this ordinance and need, need to get a permit.
Okay. Are we deliberating now, or should we open the public comment?
I think we were right on the line of asking questions. Um, but yes, having a public comment at this point is an excellent suggestion. Mr. Montemayor?
Yes, we have one hand raised from Kimberly Williams. Kimberly, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Kimberly, um, this is an interesting proposal and, um, you know, as representative of San Mateo County Surf Rider, I don't think we particularly oppose this, but uh, we do have some questions, and that would be that I, I think my understanding is that this, um, proposal, from what I've read, would not institute any permanent structures on the, the spaces that we're talking about, that these would be temporary, um, even though the ordinance i- is looking at to be permanent. The spaces in use that are in question would be temporary use and would not involve building any permanent structures on them. So that's a question we have. And also, um, in terms of parking, um, I think as long as there is still access to the public areas and to the beach areas and that, um, it's not such a big impediment, but I do wonder about, um, I guess, accessibility for people who have disabilities and how you would protect special parking spaces for those people. Um, I think you mentioned that briefly, but I'd like to hear more about how you would, um, guarantee that. So those are my thoughts and my questions, and thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Madam Mayor, there's no more hands raised at this time.
All right, then we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I see Councilmember Big Stick has a question or comment.
I'd just like to follow up with, um, Ms. Williams' questions. Um, I can go over them again if you don't recall, but it looks like you got it.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, uh, Ms. Williams' understanding is correct that we're looking at an ordinance that will run permanently outside even when the COVID emergency ends, but that the structures associated with this, um, this program are not permanent. They can be taken down. However, we do want them to be, um, s- like, I guess you would call them semi-permanent so that they have, um, you know, they're safe. That when the winds pick up, they're not gonna blow over. And, but they are not permanent structures, absolutely. And regarding accessibility, I, I would imagine we have currently in the, um, the temporary program that accessible parking spaces are not eligible to be used in, you know, for, for parklets, um, at all. They need to be maintained and their access needs to be maintained. And furthermore, that there needs to be accessible access to these spaces. So the, um, for example, the parklet needs to be constructed so that somebody, um, who, um, perhaps is in a wheelchair, or maybe it's, you know, can just kind of go from the sidewalk onto the parklet and, um, and be able to do that, just like anybody else.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So I have a question and, um, oh, I'm sorry, Mary had her hand up. Sorry, Mary.
All right, no worries. Tina, I was just, um, wondering if, if we're also gonna include or if we can also include like the chords and things that go across the sidewalks when people are playing music, like, we can talk about that as well, right?
Yes.
I think that's really important. I know I've tripped on one myself, and I can only imagine trying to get everyone in a wheelchair, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I kind of ask a clarification. Now, in my mind, Um, I kind of ask a clarification. Now, in my mind, um, a parklet. Is like those ones you see at a lot of different cities now, two by fours on the street. Oh, very substantial looking document, right? That's a parklet. And then there's, and then outdoor dining will be considered a sidewalk with tables there. And maybe there's a rope or some portable looking barrier. Am I correct? A parklet is a substantial. Structure that is not taken in every night.
That is correct.
I just want to be sure I have the right vernacular, that's all. Could you put those questions up so we can just go down there one by one? You know, for the slide, thanks.
So, um, I think the questions we're talking about are on page four eighty-seven.
So this slide, um, thank you, um Clerk Coffee, this slide has the four questions that are. New to this conversation and then the next slide is confirmation um of the previous direction. So we can start with the. The, the number, yeah, thank you.
My wife, go ahead, Tina.
I, I just wanted to introduce this because the language sometimes gets a little confusing.
Mm-hmm.
So parklets are generally in the public right of way. And they are, that is for use by the public. And some cities have their ordinances written such that the business that is. In front of or adjacent to the parklet and uses the parklet, that they sponsor it, that they um. They maintain it, but that technically anybody walking by could sit there. And then there are some that are. You know, just designated for use by that, say, restaurant. And there seems to be in different cities, there's kind of two of them and, and this is an evolving topic with. Planning directors in the county and everywhere probably, and, and I noticed that there was a conversation on a list served today about. Whether or not perhaps if businesses want to um. Have exclusive use, that they pay some sort of rent or, or lease, so that it's not a gift of. You know, the, the use of the public area for the, for the period of time that they have the parklet. So I just wanted to explain that so I could. Kind, kind of confusing.
So my understanding is the, the parklets aren't essence part of the restaurant. The restaurant has a liquor license, so therefore they can serve alcohol in the parklet. Does that mean you cannot have someone under twenty-one? You know what I mean? Bars don't have parklets, but restaurants do. Can you have a requirement that you have to be at least twenty-one to be in the parklet?
So that is going into an area that ABC, Alcohol and Beverage Control would, would have jurisdiction. And I know they have um, special um. You know, kind of rules that they've set up by order of the governor during this pandemic. And there is recently several bills that were passed. That directed ABC to create permanent regulations for this type of question specifically. And so that's, you know, my response is it could be any of the above. Um, but that's really for ABC's. Um, you know, in their purview to control.
Um, the, the lease might be in, or payment might be an important issue because. If I'm in your restaurant and I fall out of your chair and hit my head on the ground, whose property is it? It's really city property, so, um. There's kind of a difference in, in whether or not the restaurant is running it. I mean, if they're leasing it, then it's their issue.
Mm-hmm.
Then they have the liability.
I think that's part of the reason why the city attorney's office definitely during this outdoor activity license. That is part of the reason why um there is um. There's more paperwork to fill out if you are using the right of way.
I can see that.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, my wife and I were out today and we were, we were in a restaurant and they had tables on the sidewalk, okay? And it was in a shopping cent, not specific, it was down in Santa Cruz. And there was a woman went into Safeway, bought a salad and she sat at the table of the restaurant. We were at, okay, outside. And so I asked, I don't know whether he was the owner or the waiter. I said, so, you know, I told him, I'm on a city council, we're talking about this tonight. How often does this happen? And he says, not that often, every once in a while. And he says, I told her that if we suddenly had a rush, I would probably ask her to move. And she was okay with that. But he, he did not think that it was, he did not seem to think that it was. That big an issue for him. So I would kind of, mind, I'm starting to answer the questions for myself. Should the ordinance require that parklets be available for the general public? I think unless the part, unless the business owner and the city decides to charge a rent of some sort. Um, I think it probably should be, maybe a sign that says this, this was built by ABC Restaurant. For the use of our customers, you know what I mean? Some verbiage like that. Could you leave if asked or something? That's my thought on one.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you, Mike, on that one. And I, and I've seen that, like, you know, people will be. Going to the beach and they'll sit at the tables in front of Breakers, but when, you know, customers come in, I, I've seen them just politely get up. And go to the beach, so it could be just a very polite exchange. So I think that the general public should be able to sit in those seats. Um, and, and unless they're leased, yeah, then they definitely have control over that.
Sounds reasonable to me.
I agree. So yes, available to the public if. Not leased, but if they're leased spaces, if we develop a leasing program for those spaces, then. It would be only for the patrons of the business.
Okay.
Or maybe amend that to, to, even if, if we develop a lease program. Leave it up to the business whether or not they want to do it, because somebody might buy something or whatever.
Yeah, like at their discretion.
Yeah.
I think what I envision on this is, you know, like what you said, Mike, it's the proprietor you were speaking to. It doesn't happen that often. I think what I would want to know. It's hard to, how do you, how do you put something into an ordinance anticipating every future outcome, right? What if, like, there's ten seats in the parklet and all ten are full of the public all the time? And it's not a leased environment.
Well, there you get into, if you look at Nick's backyard, there's a big wall around it, right? And Valmar Station, you don't go in there unless you're through the restaurant, but Breakers is in the middle of a. You know. Uh, a big public area, so.
Right. So I guess my point is. If we put this in that it's accessible to the public, then. The public starts using it a hundred percent of the time, how is it benefiting in economic development aspect? And that's, I think, the genesis of this, right? That's where we started with this. So I wanna, I guess what I'm trying to say is I want to make sure we have some recourse or some. Some controls or some.
Could a business, could a business decide to lease it later?
Yeah.
So, so if it becomes an issue, they could, they could decide to do that. Do we have to make it something that's decided right away?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, if they do it and it becomes an issue, they can then. You know, pay the city whatever, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars for the year. And then they can put a sign up, private property for customers only, and then it's enforceable.
Well, my, I haven't looked into it deeply, but my impression is it's, it's vastly more than a hundred or two hundred dollars a year. That some municipalities are charging for these.
I, I have no idea about that. I just threw out a figure. I mean, you know.
So I, I think we would have to really do a staff, do a robust look at that. Because really, we are taking away a parking place, right? Part of the public right of way.
Yeah, and I guess, are you settled for number one, Tina?
Feel like you have what you need, Tina?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll move on to the next one.
So density standards be developed, would it be possible to write the ordinance? So that a maximum per, percentage of a block of parking, so let's say. No more than twenty percent of the parking on a block could be in parklets. Is it possible to write? An ordinance s- such as that?
Yes, that's, and that's precisely what I had in mind.
Oh, okay. Great minds think alike.
Percent in mind, Tina?
No, not necessarily a percentage, that's just a, a percentage and we'll, we'll um, we'll bring it back.
Um, I can't see Sue Varras, any other comments on that one?
Um, Mike, yeah, that's gonna get complicated too, because if you have Nicks and Breakers. Are they in the same block? But Nicks is actually on their property. So. But it is taking parking spots, right?
Yeah, but there's also private parking and tow signs in that space. I learned quite by accident, never knowing it was that way. I, one day parked back there and went, oh, big guy's towing.
In, in Nick's, in Nick's parking lot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a, just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, these are all issues that staff will have to grapple with, right?
I, I do think, I do think it, it, it might be a different. Uh, percentage, but I do think that that comment um from Councilmember O'Neal is relevant in private, private lots. Um, right now, um, or when we started, not necessarily maybe right now, but when we started the outdoor activity license program. Um, part of the reason why we were not as concerned with parking is because the um. The um, the amount of people that were allowed indoors, either was zero or um. There was a lot less and, and maybe that is still the case because some people are not ready to go uh out, out to eat yet. But I think that when um, when we do come out of this, that that percentage is probably very relevant to. Um, you know, private parking spaces like at Eureka Square or anywhere else.
Mm-hmm.
Then I, my, my thought is density standards be developed. I, I think there should be some sort of density standards and I would suggest that it be a percentage of parking is the easiest thing. I can think of, you know. And I don't know, do we, would we want to include something that. Restaurants kind of cooperate, so you don't have two or three parklets on one block, you have one. Larger parklet.
Like on Pedro Point, they share one outdoor place, so all the restaurants share that one spot.
Right, right.
Which kind of works.
Yeah, I think that that works and, and particularly if you have um establishments that are more takeaway. So they're not as concerned with table service and so you might have like an ice cream and a coffee place nearby and they. They share and um. You know, patrons from either businesses can go there.
Now, let me see, Councilmember Big Stick, are you okay with this? I couldn't see your picture, yeah.
Sounds good.
All right. Do we feel like we have enough on number two?
Number three, definitely. I think the only thing I would say is maybe you have a small and a medium. And if necessary, a large, you know.
Hmm.
For different sizes and a pre-approved one, but let's say a Chinese one could look like Chinese and. Indian can look like Indian.
Well, so people could customize it from a decor standpoint, but that from a structural. Aspect, it has a consistency.
Yeah.
Would address safety, like you were mentioning, Tina, where it doesn't blow over and things like that.
Yes, correct.
I think also, when you're developing the pre-approved specs, I think you should probably think about signage also. You know, because, you know, like you drive down San Francisco, there's all these parklets and you don't know who it belongs to or whatever. You know, it's something like in Manor Parking Space where there's like four restaurants in a row, you know. There would be ideal if they all cooperated and then there was signage or some sort of.
Mm-hmm. And I think um, just aesthetically, I think having a more semi. Substantial structure uh might have a, just, it might have a better aesthetic too. Then. Lots of different formats of barricades or different approaches.
Right.
That's interesting because Grape in the Fog puts them, uh, put them out and they were metal barricades. Um, Breakers leaves theirs out, right? Those are uh, payrails. Um, Pedro Point just has ropes, um, and Law. Um, sorry, Law Coast, no, the, the, oh, how come I can't think of the name of it? Um, the Pisco Sour Place, um, they built a whole entire structure with roof and everything. So everybody's outdoor dining is totally different and even the kickboxing place. They just put up a temporary barrier when they're using it outdoors. So we do have to consider not just restaurants. But these other businesses also.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we don't want to be a barrier either to business, right? We want to think about that too, and I, I don't know how we can, but.
I mean, in terms of like visual, are you thinking, Mary, like storefronts are blocked by them kind of thing? Or, or blocking access to other businesses?
Or maybe, because I, I read something in the staff report about um businesses that are already, already have outdoor dining, like. Are we gonna make them all of a sudden spend a bunch of money to build a structure?
Well, I, I think that we would need to consider taking them case by case. Um, I won't name any names, but during the big storm at the end of October. One of, one of those mentioned. Blew completely apart. And I think we are lucky that there was nobody really driving around at that time, because it, it, um. So, so some of them, you know, need, need to be built better, especially when wind load is gonna be a factor. And what we discussed, um, this came up at the Economic Development Commission, and what we talked about is we do have budget. To work with an architect who can help us with this. I think there's a way where design guidelines are produced that. Um, the, the quality is there for the good aesthetic, but it also is done in a way. That each business can express itself um the way it wants to be, you know, expressed.
So what, what was um inspired in my mind is will there be different designs depending on the business type?
Um, I don't, I can't answer that yet. We'll have to see how the, the development of the design guidelines go.
But I think we're all, you know, like Mary brought up the, and Sue brought up the kickboxing and the gym and stuff. They're not hauling out a, they're not hauling out an exercise bike and weight machine out into the parking lot, uh, right? I mean, they're, uh, do they have, actually have like a weight, a big heavy piece of equipment out there?
The kickboxing place puts. The kickboxing place puts out large kickboxing stands out.
Well, that's the one in Fairmont, right?
In Fairmont, right.
Yeah, those, those black things on the, off to the side.
Right.
Well, you know, that's private property too. That's up between them and Fairmont.
Oh, I, well, okay.
Yeah. I think we need to be flexible. I mean.
I do too.
Yeah, I mean.
And is there maybe, is there an opportunity for like ARPA funding kind of grant stuff? That can maybe help businesses?
Yeah, that's something that we mentioned to the city council in the August, um, um, study session. So I think, I think mainly for three, I just want to get the councils of authorization to study this further. That this is definitely something, you know, because it's going to take some resources. And ARPA funding is something that could, um, this could qualify for ARPA funding. Um, and, um, I had a little bit of, um, some other money budgeted for this activity. So, um, so yeah, I think, I think that there is some possibility to study that further.
Right, yeah. Because some of the businesses already spent money doing it. And to tell, come back and say, oh no, now you need to put up these walls.
Right.
That are different than your K rails or different than your barricades. Is, kind of could take away from the business actually wanting to do it. Or doing it.
Well, and I'm kind of reluctant to use the ARPA funds because that's like one-time money. So like, this business gets it, but then the next guy doesn't get it. Do you know, you know what I mean? I mean, I, it's a good point. I'm not against helping them out. I'm just concerned about that.
Number four, yes.
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 That was an easy one.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna, you know, presume that there's other, other coastal cities. That are, are jurisdictions that are having these conversations, recognizing of course, that there are also different jurisdictions of the Coastal Commission. So I would, I don't know that what they decide in Pismo Beach is, or wherever, is necessarily communicated to our region. So I, you know, I'm guessing they're gonna have, this isn't the first time this is gonna come up. Let's put it that way. So.
Clerk Coffee, can you go to the next slide? So these, um, bullet points are direction we received at, in August. So, um, I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time on these. I just wanted to confirm. Um, we, I think we know, yes, we're talking about use of the right of way, um, all types of businesses. I wanted to make sure I heard from council on the hybrid permitting approach. Is that, I wanted to confirm that that was your, your direction. There's, there's also, you have kind of two ends of the spectrum on either side of that. You have make it only administrative, no ability to appeal it. Or you could, um, continue to require use permit for these.
By, let me, uh, by appeal, do you mean that a formal planning commission, six hundred dollar fee appeal?
Yes.
It just seems like everybody should be able to work together. Um, but I don't think that always happens.
I think having a hybrid, that's I think what, at least in my mind, the hybrid approach allowed for notice. So that if, you know. If they haven't already worked it out, it's giving the, the, it's requiring notice. It's giving them the opportunity to be aware.
And then speak up for themselves too, if they want to.
Councilmember Vado Las's comment kind of triggered a thought that perhaps one of the requirements. Either whether or not it's codified or just in the application requirements. That they have, you know, signatures or, or, you know, a test that they've talked to all of their neighbors. And so, um, we do that with special events. Um, you know, folks have to go around and get, or not necessarily special events. But if there's a street closure, for example, somebody wants to do a block party, you have to get so many signatures. And so that's something, that's an idea that came up when I was hearing Councilmember Vado Las's comments.
I think that's a good idea. And, and then it could be an administrative process and would cost the person so much less money.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Yeah, I like that.
I do too.
Yep, I'm down.
Yes, yes. Um, I'm gonna go to the very bottom because I think that's the most controversial item. Other than, that's the live entertainment.
Uh, Councilmember Vado Las, before you, before you go to that, uh, I'm starting to jump in here. But I, I did have the thought, so I wanted to throw it out, see if council wanted to discuss about it. But with the bullet item before that, which is the set permit fee for a new permit type. The discussion about appeal potential, um, made me think that, you know, typically the problem with appeals is that. Uh, you know, city staff and the planning department particularly works on cost recovery, right? When we, when we set and estimate permanent amounts. And then when you have an appeal situation, it requires a significant more amount of time and analysis to process that appeal. So it's more of a cost impact to staff. So, um, I am just thinking aloud and Director or Assistant Assistant Attorney, where am I supposed to chime in here? But, um, I, I don't know if there's a possibility that you have sort of two, you have a set permanent fee type. But then, but then there's, um, or possibly another fee that would need to apply if an item was.
Okay, would, would it be possible to have administrative approval subject to an appeal? And then maybe there's three planning commissioners that serve on the appeal board. And then if the person isn't happy with the decision of the subcommittee. It then goes to the full planning commission and then starts racking it up with fee.
So certainly if that's the council's direction, we can go there. But I think that that's actually creating more work and an additional layer of process. Um, and could be more costly than just using our, our standard appeal procedures.
City attorneys here.
I would agree with Director Wormermeister that it, that, that approach could be, um, you know, just as much work as taking it to the full planning commission. But there may be other options to explore, such as creating a system where it's appealed to city manager. Or just one, um, appeal hearing, uh, officer, rather than the full planning commission. But in any case.
Could you have an appeal of head of public works, police chief and city manager? Three staff members, because police and public works are probably going to be the two most involved. A staff appeal board.
I think we leave it alone.
I think that we could explore that option, but I do think that stat, you know, creating a board of any type to consider an appeal. Including the planning commission or a three-member body, it just takes a lot of work, effort, time to coordinate that body. Um, but I do wanted to, um, alert the council that it's ten forty-five.
I was just noticing that. I think we need to take a vote about continuing. What do you think?
We go to eleven thirty.
On it, one of the aspects.
We have to vote.
With a motion by Councilmember Vado Las, uh, to go to eleven thirty, seconded by Councilmember O'Neal, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vado Las.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes. City manager.
Um, you know, I think that one of the aspects of this ordinance is there are going to be, there's going to be a learning term. There's going to be some complication and unusual circumstances. So undoubtedly in a year or two after we build some experience, we're going to need to, uh, revisit how the program works. And, you know, the, the cost for appeals. Might just be something that we table, uh, you know, other than our normal, where if you're gonna feel something, you have to pay that appeal fee. But it's the additional staff cost, which is usually borne by the applicant. Uh, you know, we can see how that, uh, how many times that's occurring and what the impact is. And, um, might be something to be, we'll, we'll think about it more. I didn't want it complicated too much. The nature of it just occurring, it's happening all the time. And we're gonna be spending a lot of staff time on appeal.
So Kevin, are you saying that we, um, develop a set fee for new permit except for in, uh, cases of appeal? In which case the applicant bears the cost?
Well, that would be, that would be one of the, one of the options.
I think I'd be okay with that because if they don't vet their, um, if they don't vet what they're doing with their neighbors to begin with. Then it sort of makes sense to me that then by evoking that process, they're the ones who wind up paying for it.
I think my slight concern is what if you have weaponizing the process? Like recognizing that it's going to be the applicant that's bearing the cost. That's my concern.
That's a good concern.
Yeah, cause you could almost have competitors, you know what I mean? One guy already has the parklet and the next guy wants to open one and he just weaponizes it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I hear you.
I'm kind of, my, yeah, it's very complicated. My, um, I have to say, no, no, you could delegate this probably Kevin. But, um, I kind of like the appeal to one person like the city manager, um, approach personally. It just seems more straightforward, um, than the full, uh, planning commission process. But that's just my immediate thought. And I think that staff will probably come back with choices. Am I right about that? Or do you want to clear direction?
No, I, I will come back with choices.
And I say we recognize existing, so they're not starting from scratch.
Yeah, but I have a note on my, on my packet thing, like how, how do you recognize? I don't, I'm trying to understand what that looks like.
So I think that we could give them some amount of time. For example, if they need to upgrade their, the look of their, um, their parklet. We could, we could do that. If they're in an area that, um, you know, is at capacity for whatever, um, percentage. You know, of, of parking spaces that we land at, that they're, of course, are already there. They're gonna continue to be there. Um, that is the type of thing that I was thinking of. And, um, I need to consider this further. But it could be that, you know, since they're there and it's been okay. Um, that maybe their permitting process is somehow, um, um, streamlined.
Okay.
Don't they already have a permit?
They have a permit under their temporary, um, um, the temporary licensing program. So my, my idea is somehow to kind of transfer that over.
Okay.
Okay. And so, did we agree about the set fee? I don't remember. Oh, I think we didn't.
I think we did.
Oh, we did. Okay, good.
What, what did we agree on?
The set fee for the new permit type.
Ri- what, what, what was our consensus? Remind me, please.
Say yes.
That it was going to be a set fee.
So the one question I wanted to ask before we wound up into that much more complex conversation. And I'm just gonna ask this question as though that conversation didn't exist to see if a different response comes that might help me.
Okay.
A little bit. Tina, in your opinion, and again, I'm pretending for just a brief moment like that conversation didn't exist. Do you have a concern that if we set a fee, you won't be able to recoup costs on your end? And then if your thought process just goes back to that conversation, then forget about it. But if you have a different insight from the simplicity of that question, um, please help me.
So, um, I, I, I do not have a concern at the moment. Um, as we live with this and if they become more complex, we can always ask the council to revise the fee during our master fee schedule adoption. And, and bring you to justification. But the reason why I say that is we have reoccurring permits that are fairly, I'll, I'll say benign and non-controversial. Like, um, the, the, um, pumpkin patch or a Christmas tree sales. And they become routine to staff. We know it takes X amount of hours to process it. You know, if one takes a little bit longer, one takes a little bit less and it all kind of averages out in the end. And it's, it's not a concern. So at least my goal, my hope is that eventually this program becomes like that. Um, and if it doesn't, we, we will come back to the council and say we need to change the fee structure.
Okay, so our consensus is yes. Thank you.
So Tina, when you get to areas like, let's say where Valmar Station is and Pacific Manor. Are we going to be looking to revise? How are we gonna handle our current parking standards? Right now, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have square footage. You have X amount of square feet. This requires two parking spaces, right? Something like that. How are we gonna handle parklets and parking requirements? In, and in private areas?
So, so that is, that is something that this ordinance would need to address. We would need to by ordinance, address how we are, um, uh, modifying the parking requirement.
Okay, so we will have to be looking at that. Okay.
Yes.
Are we ready to move on and continue to permit live entertainment?
Yes, we are. Let's go. Councilmember Vado Las, you wanna start?
Well, there's a difference between amplified music, non-amplified music, um, hours. Um, I, I know that one of the biggest things was that someone was having music mostly every day, starting at three P M. And going till eight every day. Um, I think that we may need to develop hours and days. That people can have live music. I do think it helps the businesses though, to have the live music. I've heard good comments about the live music and how important that is. I didn't say anything.
No, you did. You laid out the issues right in front of us.
I agree that we need to talk about hours and days. I think the amplification, there's specific, um, specs or something that were discussed before. Where.
Decibel levels.
Thanks.
Shades of the airport roundtable.
We could look at that though, because we don't want to restrict it. I, I wouldn't want to restrict it fully because, you know, music's, music is great. I, I wouldn't want to restrict it fully because, you know, music, music is great.
I, no, I agree with everything that's been said, but do we also need to change it for Palmetto, which has residences above these businesses? And let's say Rockaway, which has minimal residences. Do you follow what I mean? Or Park Mall or?
I didn't, I don't, I didn't get a sense that it was residences that were upset. It was seemed.
No, it was businesses, but if you start having people go whole bore on music, then, you know, if they go till 11 o'clock on, you know, Wednesday night on Palmetto, you know what I mean? I think we need to maybe have different standards if there's residences.
Well, what if like, okay, this is not happening, but say Breakers decided to have outdoor music. Look up when you're there and you see the full hotel. So those people are in housing also because the hotel's there. So it kind of makes a difference.
But I think that's when the days and hours comes in.
Right.
I agree.
Right.
Studying decibel levels, I think that's a part of the decibel level study is what's appropriate for where.
Yeah.
And I, I am looking towards an ordinance that is easy to understand and easy to enforce. And it's difficult when decibel levels is part of the standard. And it's in a, it's a, it's an activity that generally happens on weekends in the evening when there's limited staff to, to, to check up on that. So what I was hoping is to have, you know, maybe just, you know, Thursday through Saturday from some, this hour to this hour, and then Sunday, maybe a little bit closing or ending the entertainment a little earlier on a Sunday. So that it's really easy. It's easy for staff to administer the ordinance. It's also easy for the people who are running these businesses, who I think genuinely want to comply.
But then why don't we do this is I think there seems to be a consensus that we need to look at hours and days. And we'll just reserve comment for when staff comes back with the ordinance. Is that okay with the council?
It's fine with me. I think we're going to have to have the conversation.
What kind of hours do you think? Like four to, I mean, six to nine every day?
No, no.
During the day on Saturday and Sunday. I mean.
Like what Tina said, Thursday through Sunday. And then we can have like, I don't know, we have to talk about the hours, but.
Yeah, I think, well, let's, well, staff will review what other cities are doing and we'll see what the.
Okay.
We'll see what the record is.
I definitely don't think you could say, oh, well, in Sharp Park you can do this. And in Rockaway you can do this. And then Lindemar you can do this because that's way too complicated.
Yeah.
One, one set thing.
We can say it, doesn't mean it shouldn't work though, but yeah. Because you're on the council. Yeah. So I think let's just wait and see what staff comes back.
And there's so many, I mean, say that you're doing kickboxing and they want to have loud music during their kickboxing. I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, I have all these thoughts.
What's interesting is that the last time we met on this, this was kind of the hot button topic. And it, it, it was a, a meeting purely about decibel level versus, you know, amplification. And now there's nobody here from the public to give any feedback. And then the next meeting, who knows? So.
I think Tina brings up a very good point is we know, we all have gotten emails from one area in town, right? And the biggest problem is, is there's no staff on duty to deal with that situation. And I think Tina's suggestions are wise. And I think just bring it, have them come back with their recommendations, what other cities have done in the council chats.
Sounds good.
And then we make up our scenarios to Vado Las. When the green men come down from the moon.
My, my scenarios could all be valid.
I know.
All be.
Is this like a Zumba thing, the kickboxing and the music? Is that what you have in mind?
Sure.
So council members and staff, let's refocus. Do we feel like there's anything further that you need from us on this item, Tina?
No, you've covered all the topics. I have what I need. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
All right, adjourn?
No, there's one more, Mike.
Oh, damn, I missed it.
It's not a long one, I don't think. It's item 10, which is the redistricting. And the issue that came up, because it was a timing issue more than anything. Because the, the county board supervisors has identified a map for redistricting. So Kevin, do you want to explain it? Because I'm so tired. I'm not making any sense.
Well, that, that was pretty good explanation. I mean, the, the, the last meeting, we had council discussion and comment about redistricting maps. Two, two were being recommended to the board of supervisors for the day following the last November at city council meeting. That meeting of ours got adjourned early because of the Comcast cable outage. So we had to defer that item to tonight. And in the meantime, the board of supervisors had their meeting on the ninth. They directed more work on four additional maps that then came back to them on the 16th, I believe. And they adopted a map, the Communities Together map, which is more or less, I think, a status quo districts for county supervisory districts. So now what we're faced with is the county has adopted a map. They've directed their staff to bring back the, the ordinance revision to implement that map at the beginning of December. And this is on the council agenda to discuss. And it's basically the council could not take any action.
I think it's, at this point, it's kind of a mute. And I mean, it's the same, it's been the same as it has been for 10 years. So why let a sleeping dog lie? So, or let us sleep, let a sleeping dog lie.
That was the question is whether we wanted to send a letter saying, yes, we agree with this, or we just want to leave it alone.
I, I don't think staff needs to spend time writing a letter.
Yeah.
We're good.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah, since it's already voted on.
Okay, does that require a vote then, Ms.?
Mayor Beckmeyer, we need to call for public comment before.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Let us open public comment on this item. Mr. Mont.
Madam Mayor, I see no hands raised right now.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And Madam Mayor, this is just a directional item, so we would just need to give directions to the city manager.
Any directions?
Tiger has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No worries. And I'm, I'm eager to go sleep like a dog, like Mike was just suggesting, so.
As long as they don't wake you.
But the one thing I did want to say is what occurred, and I, I'm happy with this. I had comments about the other two maps and this, this satisfied my number one concern, which was that the coasts stay together. But it was actually during that meeting on Saturday, when we were listening to Don speak, that what occurred to me was the Espinoza map, while it was something I was absolutely prepared to argue against and not something I'm prepared to argue for, it made a really good attempt at bridging a gap with equity. And I'm, I'm not at all suggesting anything but the Communities Together map that's in front of us. But I really wanted to acknowledge that I, I really like that somebody made an attempt to do what frankly, the districting thing, at least in our community, and I would presume the county also initially was setting out to do, which was empowering minority voices whom otherwise aren't necessarily having a robust voice because there's too much spread out amongst. So I, I just really want to acknowledge that. I think that for me, and it's, it's, it's awkward saying it as a white male, that my chief concern is unifying the coast because we have so many issues where that's really a hyper focus. And that's a very pragmatic place I'm coming from. And within that context, I just want to publicly acknowledge that there was an attempt to start bridging equity gaps, which unfortunately the pragmatist in me is going in the opposite direction of, but not without the desire to have explored it. Or, you know, it's like cake and eating it and that, that's an uncomfortable place for me to be. And so I want to at least acknowledge that. And from there, I'm great with Communities Together.
Well, I'm just going to say on that point, I think we've seen through many, in, in many examples, including the earlier discussion many hours ago about the multi-jurisdictional hazard, blah, blah, blah. There was a focus, there was an equity aspect built into that process. The coastal commission has adopted an equity arm or leg or, you know, plank. I'm not sure what the right word is for it over the last couple of years. And so I think your point is well taken. And I think I'm seeing instances where institutions are, are building that in to the process in some kind of way. And, and that may just be a reflection of heightened awareness. And I, I think there's many who agree with you that equity is clearly important and something that is a value that we're putting into our decision-making.
And is appreciated in the other processes. I, I wanted to specifically call it out and acknowledge it in this one.
Right, right. All right, council members, did we make our 11:30? Oh, it's 11:08.
That doesn't give us 22 more minutes.
What else can we talk about? All right. There be no further good news before the council. I adjourn the meeting at 11:08 PM.
Good night.
Thanks to everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.